Yeah, well.
So you look happy in them.
What are you saying?
I'm just wrapping this up.
It's like Jimmy.
But you got two of you there?
No, she was here today.
Oh, even better.
Well, yeah. Except you were, if you weren't, you would say, oh, well, we all. Mine is all I can say.
But just think, you don't just stay the whole evening?
I know. That's the plus side.
That's the plus side, right.
Why is house being?
Me too.
No, no, but I was just wondering why, if why, why the historic didn't. Can you tell us what the history of the historic is?
It was, it was definitely exhausted.
It did?
So they did have one, but it's just passed.
They had just exonerated. That makes sense. That's all right. I'm gonna, you know what I'm gonna do?
Yeah.
Here's my thing. I'm gonna orbit over me.
Get out before he comes up. I mean, down to the end. You want to get right a little? Nice.
When you're done, yeah, there they're like. I don't think so.
Meeting adjourned.
Miss meeting, it's meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Beginning with public comments. Anybody have public comments on anything that's not on the agenda? Public comments, and we'll go ahead and start the continued public hearing to Three Sunday Woods. Is that, is anyone here to talk about Three Sunday Woods?
When I spoke to him, I said he was gonna ask you guys to continue.
Okay. So I've opened the hearing. Could I, could somebody move to continue the hearing to?
Probably, did he might tell you like the 25th? Would it be?
You gotta be ready by the 25th?
Yes.
Well, as we do some of the updated plans.
Okay. All right, so we'll continue to the 25th.
So.
On paper. Next, we're going to be looking at site plan approval RGFA for 18 Skating Pond Road. And just for everybody's information, we are going low tech this evening because our planner is not gonna be able to attend the meeting to run the projector. So since all of us are probably, probably be characterized as technological dinosaurs.
Speak for yourself.
We're gonna be going to graphics on paper. Can you see this, or should he, should he rotate it around?
He's okay.
He's okay?
Just go get in front of it.
Okay. All right, so Jay, you're gonna do this, the usual ground rules, 20 minutes to stop the presentation, and come from the board and our consultants and the audience. Okay, go ahead.
So yeah, we are, this is the existing commissions plan for 18 Skating Pond. We have, originally they used to have access off Boston Post Road that was concealed up that driveway section. They do have access off Skating Pond on the east side. Existing driveway comes up, sweeps around the backside of the house to a detached garage. Still, this is still a remaining driveway that goes down to Boston Post Road. The existing septic system is up in the, of the north, south west corner of the property. The, there's no drainage on the site. Utilities for the access are, all come from Boston Post Road at the time, as of right now. There's a wetland just off the property, shown here in green. The 25 foot notice service here. Michelle and I both spoke about eventually having to get a notice intent for the, for those work. Cause the buffer zone comes in the section here, so all the work that we're doing to remove some of the driveway work is gonna help. Part of the notice intent.
This was already signed up on as a 2Y A and R?
Correct.
Okay.
So what we're proposing is removal of the existing house, which actually is. Section of the house is right here. Right here. And so using, utilizing the existing driveway, we come up, we can a little, pull a section off to a driveway area. The existing house, the proposed house sits here with a front porch, garage here, and detached garage on the backside. We then bring the driveway to the back, cause it's gonna be a walkout on the backside of the detached garage. We end the driveway there, and then we remove this whole portion of pavement. We remove that whole portion of pavement and remove the actual detached, the existing detached garage. There is an increase in impervious area, so we had to do a couple of small recharge basins to offset that increase in impervious area. The project's gonna utilize the existing septic system, so we don't need to disturb anything for that. From the sidewalk, we did make a couple of minor changes for some of the tree removals. Karen can get into that, about some of the trees we're gonna remove based on proximity to the, to the house. We also added, which Karen could talk about, is some additional plantings that Karen's added to the actual planting based on the sidewalk as well. Pacing units in general will be on the backside of the, of the garage on the side. The, the, the actual lot that's here, I mean, between us and the next one on that side is predominantly wooded. So there's a, it's basically a big lot, in essence. The utilities we're using right now are the same ideas that we have. Gas coming up this side, we utilize the same trenches for the water and the overhead wires go to a utility pole that may be underground electric to the house. We try to utilize the exact same locations for the, the main lines.
What is that rectangular object on the right between the red and the red line, like to the right of the house?
That's here. That's an existing ledge. So that, the luminal work is this, is this purple magenta line. So it kinda comes along these edges. So you can see that we're trying to stay, you know, coming through here, trying to minimize, we have some grating through that section here. Come along, saving that piece of ledge, going along the existing driveway, taking out that section and then coming down and bringing it up, just so we have access to this utility line there. Saving all these trees along the edges. We're gonna do a little section out here, so we can save all those trees on that side. Running right along the driveway here, so we can save our buffalo on that side. And then just doing some little sections, so we can save this, that all.
Do you have a finding extra by any chance? Where the neighbors are and?
I have on the, on the profile. We'll do the cross section. So you have the one of butter on this side, to the house there, and the other butter across the street, and then next to butter. That way, over on that side.
That one is lot number one, or two?
Yes.
So that needs to be, some point that might be a neighbor.
Yeah. As of right now, what I believe is they're gonna sell that, two properties. And then, yeah, this house is, this is the 120, so that's 540, so 420 feet away is this apartment.
It's, it's pretty much all wooded, right?
Correct. It's, uh, this is all wooded.
Same thing on the other side?
Yeah, the right here is the, this neighborhood right here, you can actually see their lawn a little bit, and Karen has filled that area, those areas in, and you can see through on the sidewalk. And then over here, yeah, this, this is all nice and wooded. You actually have Skating Pond.
Any questions? Good, Karen, you're up next again.
Jay?
Hey Jay, we got a question.
Sure.
Why isn't there the standard context plan that shows all the houses around it and their size?
Oh, the neighborhood locus?
Yeah.
You got that?
I do have that now. I have that.
Okay.
It was on that, your website?
Yeah.
It's on?
He might have it.
Yeah, it's on, like, that's how I was gonna. So, um. The plan that we showed on the sidewalk. And as Jay said. We're keeping. We're keeping.
Could you move to the side, please?
This way?
Yes. Do stand.
Line the angle.
Okay. Okay, so. Existing houses is here, and we're building all of the existing house. And as Jay said, we're using the same driveway. There was a pocket of view through here, so we've added some trees in there to block that view, and they, and we're protecting. We're taking down, on the sidewalk, we were gonna take down eight trees, but now we're taking down these three in the front. As we walked around and talking with people, and we looked at the trees, it was suggested that we take these down because they're very close to where the house is gonna be, and they're also kind of common in those trees. So those are being taken down on the new site.
In addition to the eight, or?
In addition to the eight. So we're, we're adding the trees that we talked about on the sidewalk that.
And where are the other eight trees?
Where are the other eight ones? So there's, they're inside the house, like, in here. So we're not touching anything that's out here. They were all clustered in there. And then. So. These, basically, the changes on the plan are that we're showing the trees that we're taking down. The rest of the plan, to review what we did, is that underneath this front area where it's already wooded and there's a nice buffer, we're just kind of beaking that up and underplanting. As the, the, kind of, the tree's not super high, but it's, that's already blocked up there. So we're trying to just fill in underneath with some loaded denderens. And then we're filling in, in the front with some more evergreen trees in front of the main buffer to add a little bit more. So trying to make this yard really private, you know, also screen from the neighbors, but this is gonna basically be the yard for the, for the property. So we wanted to make that more private, so we beat that up. And again, along the driveway, keeping the same location of the driveway, we're filling in underneath the, the buffer here with evergreens. So there's paeirs and some, um, loaded denderens along here, different type of root that we're gonna fill in there. And then there's some large pine trees under here that exist, and so we're filling in underneath them also to just kind of refill that. That's green. The lighting is all dark sky. We have 14,790 watts. Sorry. Only, it's, it's only lit where, you know, we have one post lamp, and then we have just lighting all the doors and, and stuff that we have. This area in here is to provide a, kind of, everything gateway and this into the parking port, so it has some more natural plantings here, so if you feel like you can ride, this is a front of house, so we wanna celebrate that a little bit. And then it's operated through two, two driveways and stuff.
Can you show them side by side, too?
There's not super changes.
Is that front lawn the same size as the existing, or do you mean the lawn here?
Uh, it's basically the same size. And there are some trees up here that we noticed on the sidewalk that are staying up here.
What are the changes that came this evening?
So the changes were the, we added the ACs and the generator, and we took out these trees that were in the front.
So is anything going in to replace those three trees, or?
But you said that you were gonna add three trees to replace those posts?
Yeah. Moved some trees, and we're down in here. I think we'll get add some trees on here and one on the front.
Purpose of the driveway coming around the backside, did it aim into lot one or?
No, that's not your feed into lot one.
Okay.
That's because this.
Where's the driveway actually at?
Right now?
To the plan board, and?
The plan board's gonna empty here.
Okay.
So this, this is the main driveway that goes to the parking. And this is the secondary driveway that goes down, this is a, this is a two level, it's a detached garage that's gonna have a walkout on the back, so that's gonna be for service.
Are you being sympathetic about bringing versus lot one?
Lot one starts anywhere.
Okay. So it's plenty of buffer now?
This is plenty of buffer.
Where are the two stone gates? The gate pillars?
The stone gates are somewhere around here.
They're going? The stone gates. So they're going or staying, or?
They're being removed.
Where do you put the snow for the parking board?
Jay question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Snow for the parking port?
Yes, um. Basically, it's gonna, we're gonna be going along the edges, kind of, on that side of the, this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, we put it top of the ground.
Um, architecture?
Yep.
So the, the general idea of the, um, as you can see, the orientation of the house was to, because Route 20 is out here, and the south is this way, so the sun's coming around. So we really wanted the backyard to be here, using the house to shield from noise from Route 20, and to, and to get access to the sun. And so all the, all the public spaces are sort of facing the backyard here, which is why the driveway comes around. And we're sort of looking, facing away from Skating Pond, but using this edge of the buffer, and then also using the detached garage as a buffer for the courtyard from Route 20. Just to minimize all the noise and views from there. And so it's, uh. On the, on the first two floors, it's about, um, with, first two floors, it's about eighty, seventy, eight hundred square feet. And then when you add in the attic and the garage and the detached garage, that's making it to the, to the 10,000. So it's, it's, the 10,000 square feet is, is a little deceiving, so the massing of the house is such that the, there's, there's basically a bar that's two stories. That's, you know, essentially one little deep, so it's fairly thin. And then these, this is a one-story, two-story, half extrusion for the family room, and on the other side, the, um, the garage, attached garage is also a story and a half. So from the side, it's, it's a relatively small, so it's trying to break up the massing and, you know, do sort of a traditional sort of Tudor style house. The materials will be?
Just to, just to be, just so I'm sure I'm orienting myself. But that, the lower elevation there is the elevation that you would see from the adjacent property, right? Sort of looking back at the house.
Yeah, that's, that's from, from the side.
That side, yeah.
Yeah. This, this one is from here.
Got it.
And what is the high roof elevation?
Uh, 35 feet. So the materials will be shingle, chiplack, that's the lower base, sort of a grand gray, trying to keep it lighter on top and have a little bit of your base. Architectural shingle roofing. Off light trim.
So that's the south facing foundation?
Yes, this is, this is the elevation case in Skating Pond.
And what's, what's happening with the family room? Is there a colonnade around it? Is it?
There's, yeah, there's, there's a. There is a porch at the end of it, so it's. So the family room sticks out, and then beyond, there are next to the porch.
Yes, so yours drawing's south is up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Comments from our consultants, Kim?
Just a note about that we had talked about replacing the three trees that we indicated during the sidewalk that should come down. With some sort of can of trees in the front yard.
All right, so those have to be added.
Just suggest, we talked about maybe a tulip tree or some other kind of larger can of trees.
Good. And that's?
Everything else aside.
Okay. Engineering, okay?
Yes, stormwater is fine, too. Are you gonna provide utilities on, on the, on the other lots, as you want?
I think both, both parcels are gonna be sold to the buyer.
Okay.
So then if they decide to.
Do the eight have to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there, just out of curiosity, the lower lot, the one that, that exits onto Route 20, is that, uh, curb cut there on Route 20 now, or not?
It's still there.
Still there.
The wall, the wall that's in front of it, it's in the right of way. Curb cuts still exist, the driveway goes all the way down to it.
Yeah.
Up to that wall.
Okay.
So it's still there, the wall would have to be, that portion of the wall that goes between the two pillars would have to be.
But that, that wall is in the right of way, or no?
It is. It's never required by.
Yeah. With, with Mass Highway?
And with Ewers is.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Any other questions from the board?
Do you have any elevations in the attached garage? Is that also?
Yeah, that's.
Low like the attached garage?
Yeah. So from, from the courtyard side, it's one story, and then on that, as the grade slopes away, we're, it's, it's unprogrammed space right now, but could be used as a workout room or a run room or something.
And then what, can you show the elevation of the attached garage alongside that?
It's on the same word.
Okay.
But it's, it's actually.
It's the same, it's just a continuation.
Yeah.
Is there plumbing in that other garage? That's the lower level unprogrammed space?
It's unprogrammed, so.
It's still plumbing there, then? The drains have been?
Currently, not yet.
So does the basement count as RGFA, or is it?
No, it's a store.
And it's used for living, how many bedrooms is a septic open?
Five.
Five. So any living space there, septic would have to change.
Jay, can you help me out a little bit with context? We got a flat tire on my computer. But I see that house to the left.
Yeah.
As north, to the west, seems to be a large house, or?
Yeah, it's correct, yeah.
Yeah. Do you happen to know this place?
Not off the top of my head, but I apologize that I.
Okay, and then to the right of it as well?
Yeah, that, the one on the right is, is smaller than us.
Okay.
You added, they have a couple accessory structures.
Yeah.
That kind of gets the number up, but the main house itself is, is a little bit smaller than us, probably about two thirds, I thought, maybe, maybe half of what we have.
And then went across there's a house across the street, but it's a little small.
Yeah, exactly, that was like, that's probably like two thirds of what, of what we have.
Okay.
Just go back to the right for a second. In the, in the vehicle court, where there is one, two, three, four, five, six, six, six garage bays, right?
Yeah, there's not that many lights though.
Okay. Just, just sort of go over where they are?
Yeah, so. On this one, there's one, two, three, no, one, two, three, and this is a door. So there's four lights on this side, but one of them is a, a door. And so these are in between, the one is on the end, and then we have two are in between the garage doors. And then on this garage, sorry. There's two, one here and one here. And then this covered porch has one underneath it, and the front door has one that's, they're also up underneath. So it's not, it's not like.
Yeah.
It's not like a, a right of way. Yeah, no.
Yeah.
So there's, is there any drainage in the parking port at all? Is there any, like, catch basins or anything like that?
No. What we're doing is we're captioning all the existing, the proposed house.
Yeah.
So that's enough for the, to reduce the actual run out.
I guess I see a, I see a U-shaped building.
Yeah.
I see a lot of water, maybe it's in the store like we have now. It's all gonna run down the driveway?
Yeah, so yeah, what we have is we're.
It's gonna run through those trees probably.
So we have the entire roof captured, so all that's left. Is that, so we're capturing the roof runoff for this, the roof runoff for that. The, this section of this driveway is going to go naturally as it's going now through this section there. And then this is going to go down through that section eventually go through the... So it's, you know, basically the idea is...
No, it's not, I'm saying, saying it's on my way to eat something.
Yeah, ideally it's all we want to, you know, and that's we want to just reduce runoff to the, to the... And it's easier to, and it's cleaner to capture the roof runoff as opposed to having to get something that might have set up in it and then...
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that's not the way to do it.
Because you're more concerned that's an alley.
Yeah, exactly, and water will go downpour and, I don't know, like you all mentioned, the first floors, et cetera.
Yeah, it's a little bit...
But it's, that's your, yeah, that's your...
I think it's all right, huh?
If it isn't, go here, if you want. I mean, as far as the public is concerned, it's fine. But the, the garage, the detached garage is set lower. So that's why, I think, right Jake, is that, that's not a whole flat table.
Right.
So that's why the grading, so like that, those, those doors are down a little bit relative to the front door of the house. So that's not all one, that's not one all plain.
It all comes, basically most of this, all comes out that way. Like as I mentioned, we're capturing all the roof runoff for that. So the, the only flow in this area is going to be that, that water coming off the garage which is the planes.
And sort of the north side of the house does look like it's parametric and the grade changes there. And this is, you're not bringing in or moving all the water, Phil?
So we have the, stay down. The, uh, so the, we're proposing three hundred yards of fill, um, I mean, uh, three yards of cut. And then there's about nine hundred yards of fill. So it ends up being a net fill of just over six, just over six hundred yards.
What's the elevation change between Route 20 and the house, the first floor of the house?
Uh, it's significant. So the, so Route 20 is up here at, um, I doubt that's one seventy there. And the proposed first floor is at two four five. So it's about three or four feet.
Like Route 20 would be a challenge to ask, to build a house on.
So what is the viewpoint to be of the house from Route 20?
Not much. There's a...
All trees.
It's all trees. And that's why we, that's why we settled on the work where we did, just like moving across the area. That's all, it's a few, but we're just showing everything that's six inches of the grade and then you have a lot of, a lot of ledge up crops. But there's a lot of actually other roads.
So this is a spec house, so this was already sold to someone who's been running there?
I, I believe there's a buyer, but I'm not one of those types.
And the backyard deck, how many square feet is that?
A porch, that's actually...
Yeah, well, I could go to the other one for the last, I'm assuming that was...
That's a patio for you.
There, sorry.
Yeah, a patio, yeah. The square footage of that is?
Around...
Yeah, so it's about twenty by, um, fifty, about a mile square.
That's, that's bigger than the ones we, we left out.
Well, you've done all the...
Other road was.
Yeah, let me do that one issue, those were about, I think, like three hundred, four hundred square feet.
So these are even, a good size.
Chris, any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Yes?
Um, I'm the neighbor that we haven't talked about, that's sort of on the, that's northwest, upper northwest. So we really don't see each other. But there's this old gazebo that's between us. I was wondering if anything was planned for that.
Yeah, that's right here.
Getting rid of it, yeah.
Is that what's going to happen?
I think, oh, it's, it's shown out here on the, on the lot, but it's broken. It's broken.
Is that, is that what you, you're asking, whether they're going to take that, remove that gazebo?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Hardly, so...
And you're good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Otherwise, I, we don't really see each other, but, um, there's no trees coming down between our house.
Correct, right, that whole section, yeah.
It does seem like the courtyard would be more open to my little, um, alleyway. And so I would be a little concerned about lights, but it seems like they'll all be fine. It seems good to me.
Any other?
And then there's...
Yeah, they've added additional trees. There's a lot of messy trees in there.
You're going to put irrigation...
Yes.
You know the crap. Anybody else? In that case, uh, looks good. We haven't seen any significant changes other than moving those three trees. So we'll continue your hearing to, we'll get the draft decision to July twenty-fifth. And, um, that'll be that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The red line shows the 25-foot motor strip in the underfoot buffer zone is in yellow. This magenta line is the 200-foot setback for top five, which is the septic systems. The blue is the zoning line and then we have the existing house up on the upper section of the lot. You can see that almost half the house is not going through. So it's kind of an illusion when you go on site, you think that that's where your yard is. We actually only have about 23 feet of property on the actual house. Existing septic is in the front. We have overhead wires, we have a water line coming up through off Meadowbrook Road. One driveway curb cut comes up to side little garage under. There are some existing fieldstone walls that transsect property, which are showing how much property we're going to utilize. So what we're proposing is the removal of the existing house. What's shown is basically right in this section here, right where the drive port is. It's basically a construction of a new home with a side little garage and actually a second garage under, which is going to be a further garage from Meadowbrook Road. The side of the garage, you know, courtyard, that's going to be the main entrance to the house. So we have a new curb cut in the higher section over there. We utilized the existing curb cut for the lower garage. Then we're going to actually turn that into two little cobblestone, little big sections that go up to make a little country road type of entrance. This is actually a previous paper courtyard area. We have a wall system to kind of reduce the disturbance along that side over there. We're trying to save basically all the vegetation in the front as much as we can. There is one tree that we had noticed, the double tree that we had shown on the sidewalk that we're going to be removing. The other tree, the twin that we had talked about saving that Kim had some concerns. We did regrade this area. We changed the wall, we actually reduced the width of the driveway by a foot and shifted the driveway further away from the trees itself. And then we actually, instead of turning towards the tree, we actually turned away from the tree. So we actually got some significant square footage away from the tree to help protect that tree. So now we think we can have to save that tree. The grading in the back, as I mentioned on the sidewalk, is that we have a small cut coming through this section here to help with some drainage because the house is set lower. We're actually about to see, it's a little bit lower than the existing house. Grading around, a little sweep out going around to the back. The system in the back, the septic system is a base system a little bit. It's a INA technology to try to reduce how much of a mound that system is. So we're trying to keep the disturbance in the back as much as possible. As you notice, as I mentioned here, this is that top five setback on here. Reason why the septic is as far out as it is is we're trying to get it as far away from dwelling as possible to meet as close to the requirement as we can. It's a repair system because we're meeting the same flow rate as the existing house. So the building house letting us be less than 200 feet. But they also want us to be as far away as we can, so that's why we ended up putting up this section. We are putting some recharge bases in based on the increase in runoff. So we have a recharge base in the back, which is capturing some of the asphalt runoff in the back. We have this recharge base, which is capturing some of the drive port area and the rest of the roof. And then we have one more down here, which is capturing the main driveway that comes through. There are some walls that come off this section of the house. As we come down, what the design of the architecture was, that this is a walk outside. So you actually have a garage under and then it goes to a walk outside. So then it's, that becomes a basically less disturbance, so we don't have to fill as much on the side. So then all we use was set some of the walls along the side here. So then that sets a nice defined line for disturbance. We have our level work along this edge, we're seeing some trees inside the level work as shown here. The two proposed patios on the backside, all taking into account for the previous.
That says both of the drive up going up.
This one here? So this is existing. Yeah, so that's like a 12%, 13%, 7%, 7% rate. This is a little bit better, this is about a 9%, 10%. As we get up to the actual drive port area, it expands out to about 3%.
This is an innovative septic system, right?
Yes.
How many spaces does that say?
So it all depends on what you ask for. On this one, what we did is that we asked for the two-foot reduction in groundwater. So it actually changed the height, which is that.
The height.
Yeah, so that affects all the grading that goes around it. We're able to do that because we're keeping the bedroom count the same as the existing house.
Does it reduce the size of the leaking filled up?
It's, you can do the other way, so you can ask for, no, you're one or the other. So you get the two-foot offset or you get 50% reduction.
Yeah, I'll get the two-foot.
And they have it oriented that deep in the, instead of turning at nine degrees. Do you cut the little trees that way or?
What happened is we did a, this, you see where this brook is right there. We have to stay away from that section here because we had a different soil type, sort of, so we have to stay away from that. So actually, poor material that we encountered there. We actually put a material on here so we couldn't turn it. Because we were going to get into that bend of the interior.
You're right on the setback line, James.
Yes.
You're right on the front setback and the side setback. So it's kind of, locating the house is going to be critical.
Right.
I'm not even sure it's an offset at all, the front setback, maybe a foot foot.
Yes, it's easier to spin it five. So it's not much, it's only a, it's a half a foot.
Well, it's right there.
And then it's.
A foot for you and then it's about four feet.
And then, so just. And the scale, a little bit, it can have some sort of intensity as well. But now, good idea, before you didn't have to see it on the plans, but now you can see where the concrete borders are. So you have.
I still have this house.
So that, so this house was a Plinwood house. So it was just under 10,000 square feet, it was in the 9,000 range. This house is in the 8,000 range, which is Beam's house. This house is the same, I think it's around 7,000 and change, Belichick house. And then this one over here, it's like 2005.
2700.
27. So yeah, so that's, the pre-directed borders are, when you average it all out, they're around 8,000. And then, and then I see if this happens.
You're totally incompatible.
9850.
It includes the lower garage space for about 8,000. There's an attic space.
How high are the various repelling children?
So the section's inside, the setback, we're all less than three feet. The, this here, it varies in height, so we have. So your garage, garage, that, the upper garage is at 200.7. And so on this, this side here, it's 190. So you have, this is about a 10-foot wall, along that section here. And as you go towards the middle, you can see it's grading, filling it in. So it's, by the time it gets to this edge, it's only like a one-foot high wall. So you're, each one of these is two feet of them. So it's outside of 10 and it goes out.
So there's a 10-foot drop off at the edge where the road party was?
Yep. And so yeah, so along the wall, we have.
As well as one going down the.
This is a three, this is a three-foot, that's a three-foot wall.
Okay.
It's actually less than like two feet.
Yeah, since it's already in the setback.
Correct.
The 10-foot island again is right on, right on the.
It's got, yeah, the idea of the 10-foot is to be piled up, it's on a cushioned wall. So when we set the house, that's going to be important.
And the two that run along that way?
So these are smaller walls, so these are going to be about three to four-foot high walls, maybe four and a half feet. Ideally, these are going to be boulder walls, so they're more natural. And then as we get out here, then they change to back to being about two and a half to high walls as we get outside.
And it stays about four and a half feet all the way around going east?
Right. This is, this is actually a little bit more of it, because now we're getting, this grade changes, it drops out a little more. So this is, that's a 184, 185 contour, so it's about five and a half to six feet on that side. So you're looking at about four and a half here and this is about five and a half to six.
Sorry, and then as you keep going east, what happens to it?
Same thing, so as we're going up here, the grades actually pick up. So they start getting smaller and as you're going this way, they get less and less.
So that's a sheer five or six foot there on that side you were talking about?
This here? Yeah, it's, basically we're kind of, we're running almost along the exact 185 contour. And we're about 190 and a half.
When you're doing the retaining wall part of the initial foundation concrete floor?
This one.
Are you doing veneer stone on the outside of it or?
And it ties right into that, there's two garage doors on that wall, solid grounds, ties right into that.
I mean, this goes without saying that it's so tight to setbacks that we should be more careful.
Right, right, so yeah, usually what we're going to do is stake it off for exclamation, then we stake it in the hole, come back to 10 footings, and we go here.
The John Foe goes out there and does reading?
We'll have to get it, have it verified.
We'll do a survey and ask, but.
Prior to framing, we've submitted a foundation ask once in a town, and they allow you to go out and frame it.
The bin console, just more, not support, put them near, set back to the outside.
Oh, yeah, correct. All right, oh yeah.
Two inches. Four inches.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to get into the scrape over there.
Oh, no.
Usually you give yourself a little bit of.
It's right, right on.
The steelworkers don't work to that tolerance.
Okay, and equipment?
I said even steelworkers won't, no, I'll work to that tolerance.
I, condensers, generators, where are they?
So we have AC units on that straight there, and then we have the generator at the rear right now.
Good, I think we're ready to go ahead with the landscaping?
So please, I'm sorry, sorry. For the generators, this is so close to the rear of property, I don't, that stone wall that's around it?
Yeah.
So you don't think it'll exceed 40?
What we're going to do is, if we, if we need to install the little fence around it, we will. So we're going to do the test it, then if we need to move it with the fence.
Does it become like less effective the farther away it is?
You have to kick up, as a kicker. Yes, we have like a 36, you know, I'm going to do like 48, we do that. But if you look at the 36 and the 48, they're all the same distance. After you get above 20, they're all exactly the same.
Good, all set? All right, I think we're ready for the landscaping.
So. So just to show you where the houses are in the neighborhood, this is such a kind of reduced size of the landscaping plan. And just to say, so across the street here, we added screening into the front. Along this side, we've added screening from both this house and from this side, and put these guys on this. Already for the plant in this house, we've built it along here as well. So that's just to show you that plants are in place. So this was the layer we made out on the sidewalk. And the main, one of the main differences here is the way the tree well was going to be. So originally we had this tree that we're trying to save with a tree well around it. That is kind of what's happening, what's cutting, cutting it off. And the driveway was very close. So what we've done is changed it, is pulled the driveway away, and we changed shape of that wall. So it now is. It now is, the driveway's further away, the driveway's a little narrower. And then this, this wall is further away from the tree at its closest point and much further away on the other edge. And so it's not, it was cutting off roots over the sections before. So now it's all this distance. The distance from the tree to the wall here is eight feet. And then, you know, before it was closer. So we tried to get as much as we can. So we're really trying to save that.
And the footing of the wall is how wide the wall?
The wall?
On the wall, yeah. It's coming this way, right, before it's a tree? Retaining wall.
It's retaining from the tree.
Right, but there's a footing to the retaining wall, right?
It's less than three feet off, so that's just going to be a.
Well, it's going to be these can, there's just a slope, you're not going to have any kind of footing or.
No, okay.
So I'd drive. I think there's not many other trees from the sidewalk. So we moved the driveway and we, oh, also, there's a lot of trevodendrons up the front. And so we're going to do every effort we can to try to save those trevodendrons. And also, this is the area where the painting should be painted. There was kind of a gap there. So we are, because we are cutting through where the trevodendrons are now, we're going to fill, we're going to add some taller trees. And they're more, they're evergreens, but they're more pretty fundamental, more than just our vibes. It's less than even cedar and they're leaves color, so they're different color texture than our vibes over there. And then, so we're going to use the trevodendrons to fill that, to make, to keep that feeling that's already exists in the front yard as much as we possibly can. So because we're, because we're moving the house back, we're able to keep most of the trees.
How many trees do you think you'd have to cut down?
So, my tree count is 36.
And most of them are in the back?
Yeah, just in the back in here. And that has to do with the grading and septic.
It's going to be in the front.
We're losing this guy most of the time.
How many of the bunch of losers are gardeners? We want to try to get how significant they are. I mean, they're all.
No, I didn't do a count on that, but they're all over six inches. So there's 12, 14, 16, 10, there are 18. And some of them are actually, some of the ones that were taken down are not in a great shape either. So there was one that we have marked to take down, it's already taken itself down.
What kind of shape were the roadies in the front of total, please?
Oh, for the site, I have those numbers, yeah. So on the sidewalk, I have something else. So on, yeah, I may plant, so on the sidewalk, there's, on the whole site, there's 161 trees that are large in size.
Well, you're cutting the ones that are down the valley, right?
On the whole, entire site, because it's on site.
Right, Owen?
Yeah, so there's 161 trees and we're proposing to remove 36 and we're replacing that 34.
And I think during the sidewalk, I think one of them was already down, so it's actually 35.
And the roadie.
Now I feel much better.
The roadies that are by the road, what kind of shape would they be?
Very good.
So anyway, the ones you're cutting through, you could just replant instead of bringing them in?
That's what we're going to do.
You are, okay.
Yeah, 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 we're going to, we're going to lift those and transplant those. Does there?
And just slide it down.
Yeah. So they'll be in a similar situation to what they are now, but with the lighting and everything.
I thought you tried very hard to maintain that the front. Yeah, as it is, and the back was really tipped.
Yeah.
Most of it, and so, yeah, appreciate it, so we try to keep the streetscape as much as possible, a little second problem.
You said there are arborita by the second, lower tier garage?
So along this edge, so there's, these are arborita, they're green guys over here. And then there's a carpines here, so that's a deciduous tree, but it's dense. And then these guys are deciduous white pines, which are, that again, eventually, you know, over 40 feet, 50 feet. But they're tight as well, and they open to their little branches.
Well, one thing I would ask, I guess, or if you could respond, I guess, is to have the arborita in there. Don't really block the garage door space in the road. Can you get something with more horizontal branches that'll, they just go up like pillars? And right now, when you go past that road, you're going to look at two garage doors, right? You just get those. So something in here, it's going to be at the top of the hill, so add something low that had a little bit of horizontality to it, you know, one.
Right, so these are going to get full down here, and I understand what you're saying. There's also a tree here, so it's going to pinch that opening. And then this one is a, that's one of the last we can see.
Right, all I'm saying is that after a certain height, you get a horizontal bridge, it'll begin to mask what's happening up on the hill. You know, after about 12 feet, you know, the quiet. So if there's something that could go there, then it would give more of a canopy over the driveway. It would kind of block the view of the garage, so that's not a bad thing.
Right.
I'm not sure where they would go to get the best blocking, but you see what I'm talking about. It's kind of having a solar dish on either side of the driveway, something a little more arching.
So I see what you're saying, and I also would say that you're coming down this street this way and you're looking. It's not, it's not a very wide.
I put it out there, no, I just have in the garage doors off the street that. If there's an easy way, if there's a simple way to do it, it's all paper and it's not, you know.
And there's some trees in there.
There are some, there are some trees, there's a deciduous tree here that we're saving, there are.
You know that fill-in on the.
I mean, you know what I'm asking for?
Yeah, I do.
I do, okay. If there's a way you can make it work, it'd be great, if you can't.
How about side light? Are you doing that or?
Yeah. So lighting, everything's dark sky again, these are some fixtures that we're using. So there are options where lights are first. So there's one light over the lower garage, there's three lights over this garage. There's, and under, these are both covered porch, so there's ceiling fixtures in there. There's one light here next to the door, there's some lights on these steps coming up, some of those steplights. This is also under a porch, there are just one spots over here. There's a couple of fancy pathlights along this path, along this path, near the front door and here, this little path. The woodens are 12,990. And the fixtures are all dark sky, so these are the lights that are on the garage, so they're very.
They're trellis, they're kind of in.
They're really in. This would be the spots, this is the ceiling light, this is a pendant light that's over the front door. These are the steplights and these are the compasses. Pull light that's near the main driveway, not near the secondary step.
And what's the true?
The total woodens is 12, 12,990.
Comments, questions more than Kim?
She reacted to all my comments and said, well. I mean, my biggest concern was that because Meadowbrook is low and the house is high, the sort of southern, southeastern corner there where the new driveway is coming through is really lush, way below, ever, lower than Denver's right now. So it's more the lower canopy than the upper canopy that's important there. So there will be a break through that, but I'm happy that she's transplanting those roadies which are in great shape.
Do you feel good about the streetscape?
Yeah, I mean, it'll still be robust, even though there's some other people going through it now. I mean, the top part, you know, that's always going to drive by, it's that new curb cut that is going to be the most impactful, I think.
Yeah, so I gave Jason an initial, like initial technical comments, and she responded, and now we're going to support. The main driveway?
Yeah.
Just Meadowbrook. Yeah, David's sick.
That was a very quiet whisper.
Still hear you. I'm really concerned about the water blown by the trench drain. Because it's so steep and Meadowbrook's just being Meadowbrook the way it is. So provided detail, so either like, like Love Lane has like a nice rolled edge for like a little thickened pavement on the end. Or just a really clear that the lawn shoulder goes up, but just something that's really going to be robust. And make sure everything goes into the trench drain. And maybe even consider just a second one higher up, that kind of minimizes what's blowing down the driveway. You know, so maybe before you hit the slope or something, it goes the same spot, it won't change.
You want to make it better, Mom?
Anything, like belt and suspenders, because it's just, every time we do something on the high side of Meadowbrook, I just feel like, like we're like opening up like a sludge pit or something. So, so take a look at that, see what we can do to kind of reinforce that. Again, Meadowbrook being Meadowbrook with this house. So we have to stay in a condition that there's no parking dirt construction on the street. Which sometimes, depending on the neighborhood, is like, like reinforced, that can't be the case here. Like, there can't be any parking, like, I don't park on Meadowbrook when I go to sidewalks, and it's. And we don't have room, just the configuration, you won't be able to kind of utilize the back or something like that. So this is more, that's more like a heads up, like, that one's going to be really serious. Guy might have to shovel, shovel it in or whatever it is, and I will park in the street when I go by. But, and then the last being, just, let's look at like the, maybe something more than the orange milk heads in the front too. Because where we want to save the streetscape, the inclination for people will be to like kind of pull it and just kind of slide over. So maybe, maybe that gets, you know, big boy defense, right? And that, and that type of thing, so we're not.
Especially around that tree, we're trying to save.
Oh, yeah, so, you know, maybe like that side and that center space and stuff like that. Because the inclination will be for guys to kind of just like, I'm just here for 10 minutes, you know. Then we might do what we kind of wanted to save.
You're tough when you're sick.
I just sound like that.
You know, no.
My very light voice.
All right, that sounds good. Okay. Yes, architectural.
I described this site pretty well, just kind of the diagram, diagrammaticly dealing here. Basically staying on this half of this site.
Could you please?
Sure. Simify this side. So our intent was to stay on just this half of the existing. So our intent was to stay on just this half of the existing site. The diagram shows, it's sort of a key diagram, existing house. We wanted to protect the front, existing house was seriously pushed, the main body of the house behind the existing house. Utilize this portion of the house to work with the natural department, to stay away from disturbing any fruit or vegetables. The house is shingled and stoned. The near house, additional detailing. It has, on the two floors, it has about seventy-eight hundred square feet. There's an additional, because of the garage space, even though it's in the basement.
You can go to the other side.
Sorry.
Sit down.
Yeah, just sit down.
Better.
So there's an additional garage underneath the, this is the side view of the high garage off the main court. This is that retaining wall which we discussed, which does have a railing on it. This lower garage is about seven hundred thirty square feet. And up on the third floor, there is a small attic with about seven hundred eighty square feet.
Where is this large, small attic? It looks like a lot of roof up there, but it's one small...
It's tucked into the roof on the back, it was a comment which came up with the sidewalk. Originally, this entire section was about, had about six windows, and was a much bigger former. Created another gaping peak to kind of shield the end view of that, and then just tucked this through.
So if everything this way is not usable at this place?
Everything from here over is not usable. There's high seal, has the master bedroom section, and it's mostly, has some step ups in this place. There's actually a headroom up there, you're exact. This window, that's set down, it's usable in existing structure.
Just out of curiosity, what is the cut, what are the cut and fill calculations in the site?
Check.
Is this close to balance?
Almost, yeah. It's, um, so the total net is a hundred and forty-five yards, net fill by a hundred and forty-five yards. We, it's a, the cut is just over a thousand, it's a thousand twenty-two, and the fill's a thousand, one thousand one hundred sixty-seven. So basically, taking everything from the side and pushing it to the outside.
Boy, when you look at the section, that's, that slope going down is...
Quite a slope.
Gonna need real good ground recovery.
Well, look at the elevation on that side, three stories.
And it's on top of already a natural slope.
So maybe it's just because you've shaded the windows dark, but I'm a little worried about the light at night coming from the house relative to the neighbors. I just think that we have to make sure that the screening, the landscape screening is tight.
So that's that.
Yes.
That's that border right there with all those trees there.
And so those get forty feet high?
Yeah.
What size are they gonna start at?
So they're starting at fourteen?
So that's really just going to... That's really just going to hide the basement, the windows initially.
But they're also fast growing, so the pines are fast growing.
And how tall are the trees in the...
They're pretty tall. So, I mean, if you, if you can see the spots, they're a lot bigger than that, but...
They'll be the same height as the second story is of new house? So you'll be looking at trees knocked down on the trees?
You'll be looking at... Mid, mid...
This is a science section, it doesn't show the, the full canopy on it. This is the walk outside, it cuts across to one sixteen Meadowbrook. But this is all forested with high canopy?
So a fifty-foot tree down in the dell is how, how high it would be off the block there? So it's as high as the next building, but not as high as the new building? As high as existing house, but not as high?
Those lines are the trees, right?
Yeah.
Those are trunks of trees, those lines.
So they're how tall?
That's the, yeah, so that, we didn't shoot the top of them, so those are on the process line, those are located six-inch trees.
Right, but you're saying they were, how high are they, you're saying that they are?
So that they're definitely fifty feet.
Right, but he just showed this, so your lines go higher, that's what he meant.
We didn't, we didn't shoot the total top, we didn't shoot the top of them, we only shot the middle of the tree itself.
I just don't know many six-inch trees is going, one hundred and fifty feet, I don't know.
He said seven.
Yeah, but it's still six-inch tree growth, and I don't know.
No, those aren't, we located three sixes to right, there's a lot of trees down in that, that I created.
So what are these lines, did they all trees down there, or some?
Just on that line, just the trees on that, most of that, chicken or cow section, which is...
Yeah, that's where you put...
Yeah, they might be like one or two feet on either side of that line, but that's basically what they show.
Can you go back to the ventilation? Right. So...
So...
I'm trying to understand what's, what's happening. I'm sorry, it's hard for me to read the drawing, because the lines aren't very heavy.
This is the basement.
Yeah.
Space.
That's the basement, that's bad.
This is the side of the, side of the low garage.
Yeah.
And then this is sort of the exercise.
Right, but there, there are roofs that are coming down, right?
There are roofs that break up most of this, and this is, this is going to one and a half story garage. So that's about four foot knee wall, like the garage side. And then the back, we brought the one-story roof running around, and this volume at the back is a one-story.
So on the, on the second story level, or the, the second story above the basement, what's going, what spaces are behind that, those windows?
This is a laundry. This is, this is stair, and this is...
So it's stairs in the attic?
Yes.
I'm just trying to see if there's some way to cut down the apparent mass of that wall. And if the, if the roofs don't do it already, I just can't tell. It looks like, you know, if you just look at it, because it's so different, light differentiation, it's hard for me to read it, but it just looks like a solid three-story high wall. But I suspect it isn't that way.
Yeah, so, and the lower level is done in a hit block.
Yeah, no, I don't care about the materials, it's like, it's breaking up the mass.
Yeah.
So the roof part... The one-story roof wall, and then comes across. So this is kind of...
And what happens there? Is there a change in the wall, or?
That's a, that's a wall up, so this has a four-foot knee wall.
I don't know what that means, in terms of the elevation.
So that's basically a one and a half square foot.
So is there a, is there a roof section that, that goes out there as well?
This doesn't...
That, that doesn't continue across?
It steps, it steps up.
That's a roof, though, above that one.
That's all roof.
That's all roof? That's roof?
That's all roof.
Okay. And that, and then, to the right of it, is it, that roof continues on, is that what goes on?
Yeah, then there's, then there's the, the main roof.
We have those two interlinked.
This here?
Yeah. Four, five.
That's pushback.
Which is pushback?
This is pushback.
So the...
Need a few feet?
I have a question.
It's like it's about four feet, it's about eight...
It's four five feet, and then a roof wall.
And the height of that is again, it's not tall?
Is it reasonable?
Yes, please.
She's asking about average grade.
Uh, average natural grade is one ninety-six, five, and our ridge is two thirty-three, two thirty-five.
And you did Matt's white on there, too?
It's about thirty... It's about thirty-six, thirty-six and a half.
About thirty-seven, I think it is.
No natural, it's left, so...
It's a grade point.
Right. There's so many different...
So the average natural grade is one ninety-six, two hundred. It's the main, the maximum height at two thirty-three, fifty-four. Where our house is two thirty-three, forty-five, so, two tenths of a...
Doing it, so you're, you're almost at thirty-seven feet?
Now, yeah, now part of that is...
I mean, there's another one.
The house itself.
To just go up thirty-seven feet.
The house itself, um, we were talking about on site. So the existing grade up here is two oh two. So the main part around the house is all in two hundred range. And so from the appearance, the house is gonna look about thirty-three feet from the grade. The reason why the grade is so low is this slope. So that, that weight, so you have this, basically, almost half the house is all along that lower ridge, that lower grade line. So that's really dropping that, so if we were up here at the same section here, if this grid went off, we'd probably be five feet below the max.
You know, that's, that's what's worked.
Yeah. No, no, that's, I mean, we're pushing the edge, but honestly, what it looks like is we're, we're two, three feet below it because of the real grade that's up in the house.
Except when you're...
When you're on that section. But we, we do have, we're retaining all these, these, and like, I think we're almost three hundred feet to this bottom. And, you know, as, even when you come out of Meadowbrook, because you, all these trees here are also gonna give, are gonna block this area, they're gonna do that. That break up, because they're all, they all have different elevations of where their branch is on.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Could you just give your name and...
Yes. I'm gonna ask, this is on a, Jean Brown, and we live at one oh five, which is probably the last small house on Meadowbrook Road. It's also about twenty feet below the site level of the current house at one oh four. And the thirteen percent, there's a thirteen-degree driveway, we're talking about, we're in the low end of that. So it's pretty hard not to feel like the surf at the bottom of the market right now. Our setback is about the same as the existing house. So there's not much between us in what is not gonna be a massive piece of construction. I appreciate, I see your comment about the driveway, because the garages now are set on the side. Now they're gonna be set directly facing us, and our driveway is directly across. There's no, I mean, you can down that, there's a slope here, if it's in the snow, you're in our driveway. As you know, Meadowbrook's a very narrow road. It's hard for anything with a large vehicle now to come out that driveway and not end up across, because there's just no clearance to turns. It's also, as you know, a very busy road and congested, and I appreciate very much your comments about during construction, no parking. And, and the sidewalk, there wasn't a lot of parking. A lot of people didn't. But there's always a landscape trouble, something up there, and there's nowhere for anything to go. The property is also right now for sale, so I assume this is a spat house, and it's not gonna be built right away, or is it gonna be built? Is that what you're gonna question as?
We don't know, I mean...
Okay, there was a for-sale sign on it at the moment. So I guess our concerns are the size of it, and really overpowering only us, because we're directly across the street. That existing driveway, I don't know if that's, is that to be a secondary driveway?
Correct, it's gonna be just for accessory.
But there's a five, that's five car garage, right?
Yeah. But it's to be...
Well, two, but the other existing three.
Yeah.
I mean, the other three.
And then, and then just as reference, so here's the existing house, the, the main body of the new house is on the backside.
But not, I mean, backside, but thirty-seven feet in the air.
So the other...
On top of...
The existing house is two twenty-six, so we're about seven feet above that.
Do we have a section going through the house and then down into, for property?
For all sections.
For all sections.
If you could put, well, I guess the, there was a site plan that showed us across the street, and it's the same house. No, that's what you were asking.
Yeah, so here's the, this is the section coming through here, and then through the actual side.
So where's, where's Meadowbrook in this, in that section?
So we have, so here's Meadowbrook coming through there, and then this is the actual secondary driveway.
And that's your house, your house below?
Yeah.
That's something being involved.
So, well, that's, we just have a box, the ridge height there is two twenty-one.
But our house is, is one, is a one-story house.
Yeah, why does that look like it's a two-story?
Yeah, that's, you know, that...
Something doesn't look right, because that's three stories.
Yeah.
On your house.
Well, it's only, it's twenty feet tall, this is one eighty, and this is two twenty, so it's twenty feet tall.
Well, she says it's a one...
It's a one house. It's a one-story house.
No, so you're doing it like one.
You're two-story, you're...
Oh, yeah, but I'm not gonna...
You're two-story, you...
The garage, the garage is called that.
I know the house really well, it's two-story.
Usually for the, for the part as we saw, basically with the greatest from the G I S, and then we have the ridge.
The first floor is the one ground.
Wait, wait. Can you try not to talk to each other?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, the, the main floor of our house, the site, the, the part that faces Meadowbrook, is one-story. It's lower on the back, there's a walkout, or there's a lower floor in the back, and there's a room above the existing one garage that is at the same level as the house.
I don't think the biography is exactly right on that, for that house.
This here? It's, well, yeah, I mean, this is G I S data for this, but like this, this is the, you know, basically what we ended up doing is we shoot a couple corners to get a general idea where it is, and then we have to use the G I S, and then we shoot the ridge. So the ridge is correct, it's probably, we might be off a little bit from the G I S, but that's, this is the roof hatch at two twenty-one is...
Jay, it doesn't beat far, and how, how much farther back from the... Twenty feet, thirty feet?
Yeah, so what we did is, so right now, we're showing...
I thought you said the garage was, was the same setback.
So then at the main body of the house? So this, the pump-out section here? Nine, one ninety-nine feet? And the house, the section that exists in the house, the section about seventy-two? It's about twenty-seven feet back.
Twenty-seven feet further back, seventy feet tall. And how, how tall?
And think of that ridge, where it's here.
Right. The garage, that she just mentioned, so the setback is exactly the same. How tall is that?
So that's, uh... Yeah, one two-suit ridge. Same ridge height, yeah. So that's this section here.
Right, how tall? A height? Right, how tall, the height of the ridge?
Of the ridge. So that's the highest, it's at two thirty-three. So that's, so same here, this is gonna be seven feet taller than this portion of the house.
And seventy-taller, too.
Just so I understand what you're saying. You're saying that the ridge height of our house is the same as the ridge height of the current Styles house?
No, we're saying that this ridge height here, for the current house, we're proposing a house, a ridge height that's seven feet taller.
Oh, the new house, okay.
Than the existing house.
But we're at the bottom of the thirteen slope.
I'm trying to get a sense of the difference.
And, just one other comment, the water does indeed just rush down, and goes down the ravine on our side. That ravine is a continuous...
And what we're doing for us, this is, this whole driveway is getting torn up, and we're just putting just a wheel path, so it's gonna reduce the pervert area there. As Dave mentioned, we have a trench ring, we're gonna add another trench ring, so this, all this imperious area is getting captured. This is getting all reduced, and this is payers, various payers. So it's a flow to the street we...
The other driveway is actually helpful for us. It's just that the side of the, the, plus, like you said, the impact with some ravines that are lower and...
Can maybe you can make a couple suggestions about, what might sort of screen some of the impact of that, what they're looking at from their side?
The other thing is, what if when it gets bought, somebody says, I want, I don't want, you know, grass strips and, and cobblestones, I wanna drive, hey, driveway, what happens then?
It's connected. Yeah, we have to sign off on it. Or not.
Or, it would collapse.
What happens is, we, if they were to do it without that, say we did them by some of the asphalt, Ken, Dave, and he might do their final inspection to test that, and then he might just somehow see all of them come back.
And I guess I am thinking if somebody buys it after a year or two, decides they want to, have the kids have their, that, their garage, let's pave it.
Yeah, come back.
Okay. So we're gonna accept it or not?
So garage that is at the same setback, but yet is seven feet taller. This is the top of that garage. Why does it have to be seven feet taller?
This section coming across this.
It's not, it's not as wide in section, I think that's what he's saying. So the roof pitch is less steep. Can you make it lower, is my question?
About the upper garage?
Yeah, the, the upper garage. What's going on there? The terrace area?
So there's the lower garage, then there's the garage at the first floor.
Okay, oh, there's, I got it, I got it. Hard to make it.
The E-line, the E-line is actually maybe four or five feet higher than the existing case. It's not the full seventy, the ridge is...
If you go back to your front-facing elevation.
See, so this second floor is actually tuck. The existing house is a canteen, which, this would be down, straight from here to that's the additional like that we...
Is there, just let me ask, is there over the green body of the house, is there a flat roof section?
In this section?
Yeah.
There is not.
There's not? But the depth of the building is deeper across that section than it is in the garage section.
Correct, so we're using the kind of twelve-to-twelve, it's traditional pitches here, then this is a lower pitch to a second pitch.
Okay.
And then there's one dormer in that one section. There's a dormer, spring.
Yeah, the shed dormer there.
Yeah, which could have been, you know, you could make that flat.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, okay. The ridges are not all equal.
No. All the visible gables are, are the same, and then the infill, where you don't see the ends of the, of the shank.
I mean, some way you can do architecturally to reduce some of that. Or just like, is that pulled in that helps? Some way to somehow bring that received right down?
Or break up, break up that ridge line that goes all the way across.
I could probably run that down like two feet.
Anything to...
And you can break up the, the ridge line in the back.
That'll bring, that'll bring down staring down that, and she's right across the street, staring straight at it.
It's one thing to compare what it is to a canteen, but this is much more of, of a building, so...
Yeah, no, just...
It doesn't matter what the canteen used to be, what this one is.
Yeah.
If there's a way to do it, that would be like an interesting...
I could drop that two feet.
And the wood color isn't going to be, because lighter wood tends to get out more, so this would be... Have you gotten, gotten farther in that?
So, the roof, I believe, will be a one, some seater.
So it'll turn into light gray.
And she's not staring down an asphalt driveway, right?
No, that's, that's, that's that wheel cut, yeah, wheel cut open grass.
I don't know if this is a time to talk about construction mitigation, which you own, so...
No. Go ahead.
Okay, the, the big issue, of course, is the traffic and the bulldozers and earth movers and major trucks that are trying to... So, if during construction, there's a way to widen that, or put it an angle into that driveway, so that the vehicles can get out, it'd be easier than marching across and tearing it up. As you know, too, Meadowbrook is a very delicate, there's already a gas leak, as you probably also know. It right between, across the road, at one of four and one five. And they won't fix it, because they say it's not bad enough.
We can smell it, we smell that.
Oh, yeah. So just with all that additional traffic, I think that's what we're doing. The other, of course, are the hours of construction. And the cleanup daily. And also, I don't know if it's possible, but to have a, a site contact for if there's any reason that we need to get out of a driveway, it's blocked, or if there's some of the concern.
The thing to do is to get in contact with the town plan, E-line. If there are issues that you have with respect to construction activities, because we have a number of standard conditions with respect to construction activity.
I have no reason to think that there are, we can't experience persons.
Yeah.
Whether, that there will be any, so it's nice to be able to, even just walk across the street and say, okay.
Well...
Can't be that.
Well, we just can't, we can't.
But can I do that?
You can do it, it's a great contract.
Get on my mark, yes, go. Okay, I think those are our major concerns. And really appreciate it.
Yeah, I did steal my son's butter of, of, of construction impacts, and I think, because Meadowbrook is like such a jewel box, I think we did this on the last one, I think it might have been one of Jay's, is documenting conditions, video of the street of Meadowbrook prior to construction, because it's, it, I think we just have to pull the condition out of a lap, it's like the last one we did, because it...
That was thirty-three, so...
Was it?
Thirty-three, so...
We did on this one, too. We, I always, I always make you do it on this one, because the street's such a, like a jewel box.
No, I was thinking of that in the last one, yeah.
You mess up like, you, you crush like one berm, and it like upsets like the whole...
Oh, the drainage, yeah.
Ecosystem of the drainage.
No, I think that's, yeah, it's easier to document that in existing...
But all these roads are through the middle of the road.
Which is a whole, a whole, a whole nother thing.
But it's such like a, it's, it's like Jenga, like when they came through, like repaved it, and then someone like just does like landscaping, where the water used to go now like bumps like two doors down, and comes in someone's backyard. So, you know, the landscaper, you know, he did, it's, it's like, it really is a, a house of cards.
Yeah, we know.
And we do, and I, I do this, there are the notes, that same note, they present a storm work permitting plan as well, so it talks about cleanup every day, all that, you know, basically making sure there's nothing to turn on the road, clean all that, and also onsite stockpile, have to be encircled, the stabilization, all that. And, I was talking to Ken, and Ken, the idea is, we cut the skirt cutting first, we can, we do have the ability to park that here. So we can, it's...
Still, still kind of being aware of that, you know?
Oh, yes, right, oh, yeah, we have that, yeah. We have the chain link fence and all that, too, it's a workup. But if we do this through, and then do this septic leak, then we can utilize the parking.
Can I make one more comment on the landscaping?
Sure.
I appreciate your concern about the road and everything. But it would also be nice from our side, if they have some bigger bogies, you know, some jungle giants or something.
So there are, there are some in the front. There, there's some, we are adding some.
Can you show us on the plan, because aren't you demolishing some huge trees in front of the house?
One big tree has gone.
Just one, one huge tree.
That's, that's what survives. Yeah, the front corner with current driving.
Is that in the, on the upper right there, where you're looking across the house?
Yeah, so looking across, we're keeping, well, some of the big trees in the front. We're moving, we're saving those rhododendrons and moving them over, because they're like glibways now. And then we're adding, see the dark green circles?
Yeah, if you can, if you can make those as tall as possible.
So these are all...
Evergreen.
Yeah, so these are all evergreen trees. They're, they're white firs, which are, stay down to the ground, and then there's some elastic seaweed, they're a little bit more whiskey, but they still can take up.
So Jay, what is the height of the ridge of the existing house relative to the height of the ridge of her house? If you could go back to that section.
These are fourteen feet tall.
The one of them now is coming down to, right?
Which means that the new house would be like twenty feet taller, and that's not what you're showing in that section. I also think you need a section through the middle of the new house and through her house. It's, I mean, that's not twenty feet taller than...
So the existing house ridge is actually two-twenty-six. So this, it's, yeah. What we shot, it's a five-foot difference from the existing house to that one.
But the new one?
The new one's gonna be twelve feet. Twelve-six.
So the, the parallel lines that you're showing in, in the section are, are what, ten-foot increments, or?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that means the house across the street, if those are ten-foot increments, it's two thirty-five feet?
That's nineteen. This is, this is twenty feet here.
Oh, that's five-foot increments, or?
This is, these are, these singles are tens. This is twenty, these are, I mean, obviously, these are fives, these are tens. So it's one eighty.
I'm sorry.
But the new house from that side, it's like thirty-seven feet.
I think you, why, we had talked about, I think the GIS, oh.
Can you do something showing?
I have to, I have to get the property to shoot.
Well, you might just have GIS and you copy right, you know, like that. And somebody might just transpose some others.
Yeah, if that's, if that's the case, then what you're showing is not four feet lower than the bridge of the new house. It's only about six feet.
Isn't the new house from this point of view thirty, about thirty-seven feet?
Yes.
So, the house across the street, looks like it's almost thirty-seven feet.
Can't just go, I didn't need to be... There's something...
Right.
Something wrong with that section.
Whether it changed from feet to meters in the middle of it, or...
When we, like, this, we're showing a little, a spot here on this one here. This is the existing contour, because it's a rock, it's twenty to seven, so, for the, for the top GIS. And so, you know, we had shot that, so that ridge is two-twenty-one. So that's, so there, you know, it could be, yeah, the GIS is...
If you don't mind if I come and shoot you.
No, this is anecdotal, because before the house was sold, I was there a lot of time, and it's a spot. And from her main floor, I can look across to my neighbors.
Look down on your roof or edge of...
Well, my high-rise guy, yeah, that's most of his below. It's the only place that I could actually see the roof of my house and down, was from...
And that's from the existing house.
Yeah, it's from the first floor?
From the main floor, it was existing.
And then I, if you could cut another cross-section through the new house and through her house, as well as the one you're showing now.
So right now, what's showing there?
Right, so if you could go...
Well, just, it just needs, something's wrong with the section, it's hard for us to judge with the impact.
It's not right, it's not right. They're pretty much one equal in size.
Yeah. It's only about six feet lower.
How are you confident of more than five feet? Why are you so confident of five feet? There was a difference in five.
In our, our house and...
Their house, yeah. The existing house and her house.
Well, it's the, we shot it, shot that. GIS controls could be off.
Just checking numbers, sometimes the things get...
So you, you shot the top of her house.
Right, yeah.
So Jay's saying, like, the top, he's confident of, it's that bottom, he's not confident of.
Then the frame would have to be at the same level as the new, as that house.
Doesn't make sense. But I guess the question is, if it, you know, can you move the existing, the old house back farther on the side? I mean, that'd be, there's some, they're saying they can take the height off, but the other part is, if you want to take it away from, being such a massive house, you know, to the, to the house below, the only other thing to do is to move it back.
Well, yeah. I, I think we're all saying that, I mean, we don't believe that section. It just doesn't look right. But, um, let's go ahead and see what other comments might be there.
Did you mention ninety-seven as well, the house on the other side of us, which is also a little... And it would, it would be at the new... No, the other direction, not the fellow checkhouse.
Yeah, we'll watch the two-foot section, you show that one, and then the one...
Now ridge is two forty-seven. So that's, uh, forty-five above our goal.
Well, that's, that's not the house I mean, I mean the house across the street.
Across from that.
Across the street.
Where the new driveway will enter.
You're talking about over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to, oh, we shoot that. We usually do this, this, like, around, just a little over here. And yeah, so, that's across.
And that's, how many times?
Yes. For identification, I'm Blake Kennenberg, one-one-five Meadowbrook Road. We're, um...
Next to Brook.
Next to one oh-five. And downhill from this, and the low point on, the local low point on Meadowbrook Road, the low area, I think where this is square, whatever it is, between one sixteen and one oh-four, all that water, where does it go? It goes down Meadowbrook Road and either into our driveway or into the seasonal brook, that grows and runs across our property, our neighbors. It has been a continuous problem, that drainage runoff. In normal times, it just fills up our, our driveway with mud and rocks. We've had serious rains where that entire low area is filled up and spilled across Meadowbrook Road. And I'm concerned about the additional burden that this project is going to place on whatever runoff is. It's a serious problem for us at the end of our driveway. We're far enough back that we can't see this construction, we will not see it. But the runoff is a serious problem, it's come down where the Cedar Road and then...
Greenway.
Green, I'm sorry, Greenway. And then onto our driveway, this way onto our driveway. And it's because of the low point. By the way, we're talking about gas problems on Meadowbrook Road. There's a large valve or something right in the middle of where our driveway is, and...
Near Meadowbrook.
Off Meadowbrook Road, and, I don't know, National Grid or whoever does the work on it, had that bolt, and we could barely get in and out. I don't know, National Grid or whoever does the work on it, had that open and we could barely get in our driveway for a couple of weeks for us, they were working on. And it still, it still leaks, everybody knows. But the main concern right now is for us is that there's a runoff, this is a serious problem.
There's no way to establish a baseline that you can evaluate the impacts after, after the construction and mitigate them?
Well, that's what he did, I was usually going over the numbers, but in this case. Did you, did you?
I didn't make a report, no.
What percent reductions, I mean, for the two years, on what day-to-day basis, we have like a ten percent reduction?
You know, you're absolutely right, this, this is a repeating problem.
Yeah, I mean, every time. I mean, great people, a little on the road, but like the, the projects, like. It's never been like an easy one.
Yeah. It just keeps coming up over and over again. And there's, it's, everything is anecdotal, there's, there's no way to measure what the impacts are.
You know, each time a house comes through, we reduce the runoff.
Yeah.
From that house.
Yeah.
But Meadowbrook in particular is a toolbox. So, so you guys had that road reconstructed not too long ago. And it was like, it was like mayhem, right? Because they just came back and like repaved the thing and well, like water was going where it didn't go before and then it had, so like, I, I, and I know, like, that's, like the roads trust have kept coming out to like, kind of get things back to where it was. So that's, that's why I don't want people parking on it. I want to like memorialize like in video what, what's out there. Because in past projects on Meadowbrook, it's been, it's been stuff as simple as like. Someone doing like landscaping and culch, messing up like the road, the drainage on, on Meadowbrook and like, and like shooting it down to like the next person.
Right. Yeah, I know.
So, so we, we address the volumes as a rate, but we don't have control over the road. The town doesn't really even have control over the road.
Down.
That's what I said. You know, so we don't have a real toolbox other than to say, when you come in front of us, your project needs to reduce the rate and the volume coming off this.
Right, and but, okay. The, the only thing that, what, what happens typically though is that you then hear about it after the fact. You know, the, the calculations didn't work. And the, and the, and the impacts, you know, the off-site impacts are what nobody expected.
Well.
We've heard that story.
Well, what, what I can, what I can say is generally what I, we hear comments like that, but then, but you're not getting because when you get water to property. You know, if you don't really care, if it's an issue, you don't care how much water it is as much as if you're getting water in your property. You know, that's not the time for us to say, well, if we didn't do this project and we had more water. Remember, like we lessen the impacts, but we can't mitigate all the problems. So, you know, if it flooded before, it's probably still going to flood, but we're just going to flood it less. And, you know, if, you know. You know, water's up to your windowsill, it's not very comforting that when they say, well, it went up to the middle of, you know, middle of the wall.
Yeah, I, I have a, a technical picture of me telling it to somebody.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so it's, you know, you just, you know, it's not at a personal level, like I don't try to rebut, you know, I don't try to rebuttals on that.
Right.
You know, it just, but in general, overall, since we've been doing these, things have been getting better. We're having less runoff of the streets, we have the heavy rains. You know, the, the streets that have been developed over time are getting better. It gets complicated as it gets tied in with like roadway reconstruction, so like, uh, the TPW, we did new street, right? So we've been kind of like knocking down what's going on to new street because then they, new street's not one that's a little bit delicate as far as the drainage goes, so.
Yeah.
You know.
Go ahead, Rob, try that one.
No, it's touching that one, it's a total lie here.
Yeah.
Okay. But you did have some.
I don't know, I'm gonna ask.
Yes, yeah, so the, I'm trying to find the, there's part of the submission team, I was just trying to find, because it puts it online.
What I heard is the drainage is reduced by ten percent.
For the two, like the two-year storm.
And we, it's all the storm events we're, we're reducing. And that's, and that's not only just, uh, to the Meadowbrook, but also to the weather because the weather actually eventually feeds to catch some, kind of mentioned with the.
So let me ask the board, um, sort of a number of questions raised, the, the, the real, I think what I'm hearing is that we're really concerned about the visual impacts of the sort of north-easts part of the house. And that, that relates to the question of whether the sections that we've been looking, the, that's the site sections we've been looking at are giving us an accurate enough picture of what the, of what the impacts are. Is this, does this rise to the level of the board's wanting to continue the hearing? Or is everything that we've discussed possible to put into conditions that would permit us to look at a draft decision on the property based on what we've seen so far?
We need to continue the hearing. We currently, maybe the roof at a certain part of the house could be lowered. We're not sure of the section, we need to see that more accurately. I think we need to see it.
The calculations that Dave and Mary were talking about.
Which I, I have, have you given?
Not, I mean, a lot going on tonight.
Yeah, they're, they're online right now.
Oh, I got, I have, I have these, please.
Also plenty provisions for the lower garage, so the screening provisions, so that. The screening actually maybe conceals a little bit from garage doors.
If you can, but give EMI the, uh, construction issues you're concerned with, so we know about that for the conditions. Is that the proper way to handle it?
You mean the, the, the construction phase and the, the site disposition strategy?
Well, also off-street parking.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, those are standard conditions.
But if there's anything we want in addition to that.
Okay.
On the property, you can show the chain link, uh, section.
Yeah.
I would do that, the parking area.
Yeah. You can do like a small sketch of that, construction management, like, like Ken, I would like, bring that up, I guess, to show the property back.
And what of the revised or clarified section and elevation?
Would you mind if we came on your property to locate some of the grades there?
No, could you, could you let us know when you're coming?
Sure, oh, yes, yes.
And I still think you may need a second section through both houses.
Yeah, so that's the only part that, uh. So, you're saying through both houses. So right now we're going along this side here.
So just further down.
You want to go like that?
Yeah, because then you'll get the stuff, it's fine. Because that's where this is coming out of section. Just to backtrack real quickly for the, uh, just the Meadowbrook. We, they modeled the different, uh, design points around, but just focusing on Meadowbrook. It's a ninety-one percent reduction for the two-year storm rate and volume. Seventy percent reduction in rate for the, what's your next line again?
This is ten.
For the ten. Twenty-five percent rate reduction for the twenty-five and a twelve percent rate production for the hundred. And then the volume's kind of similar, so the sixty-one percent volume reduction for the ten, thirty-four for the twenty-five, and a nine percent for the hundred. So that, that's just that one design point, some of the other design points there.
Leslie asked a question, she probably should have answered.
Sorry, I, I keep hearing, we keep getting back-to-back hundred-year storms, I don't know what that means to your numbers. Every time they move the fleet, the forecasters tell us this.
So the, the, where you, you have to use the extreme rainfall atlas.
Yeah.
So when we do the hundred-year storm, it's eight and a half inches of rain, it's one twelve.
So that's, that's like the greatest one year, what is it again?
Eight and a half inches.
No, I'm sorry, what's the name of the, the one?
It's the, uh.
Cornell.
Yeah, Cornell.
Okay, that's a new one.
Extreme precipitation, that was.
Okay, and that's the one called, who's the new power warming, climate warming, et cetera.
And that's what the town adopted.
Yeah, so that, that's not the old, the old one. You said six-nine.
Even, uh, even the, the two-year storm, I think it's like three and a half, so that's, that's three and a half inches in a, in a twenty-four hour period. We get like ones a year now, so it's, uh, so we have a lot of, that's, so you think of that floods everything, so that seems that what we're capturing on this upwards, is we're used to have a ninety percent. Is there any collectability of this house back over here at last? We did that more of the time, we, we, Eric and I, we look at.
I feel a little.
Right on.
Right on, and that's it.
Okay, so I, I think the consensus is we should continue.
Yeah.
Then we'll, you, we'll have to verify this with, with EMI. But if, if we continue to the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Because otherwise it's, we're going to boot it out to September, so.
Yeah, you should get it.
So we'll, we'll, we'll figure on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
And we'll work you in somehow, maybe it's another midnight session.
Leslie.
It's always in the last minute of July, we always have a midnight session.
Midnight with Barry.
All right, great, so we'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. You see the side, you know, I want to. Yeah, okay.
What you'll want to see is the section. Grab the, grab the.
Some of it's.
And that's true.
It's a mouthless.
Lloyd, could you plug him down, because I think we'll probably put, uh, Taylor Meadows next, we'll get a quick one.
Were you looking for?
Yeah. To your left.
Oh, yeah, one of the.
Kim, we're going to take Meadowbrook next.
Okay, I think you're.
No, yeah, we just did. I don't mean Meadowbrook, I mean Taylor Meadows.
Routs to water in and from, one side to driveway and another one on the other side. And there we go, is Thunder Law. It's.
I love that also, let's just. Yeah. This, I think this is actually, I'm not even sure where we're looking at it, I mean, it's, it's a, the name was. They, they, a tick, a tree apparently, a two-fox meadow, uh, at Taylor Meadows is, uh, you're looking for. He could, you're taking a look at it, they'd like to take it down, it's in, it's in the buffer zone. You're okay with taking it down? We need to vote on.
We don't.
We don't.
But after he's put it on the agenda and realized, they can.
Okay. Okay, so this is one that we don't really have to worry about, you, you look at it and it's okay with you.
Does it need to be played for us? No, the buffer is. But let me fix, let me fix, okay.
Okay, good, so we're ready to. Ready to open the hearing for flexible subdivision special permit application at ninety-eight Love Lane. Just so everybody, just so everybody knows, you have to, you actually have to refer to the drawings by sitting because otherwise you're blocking the view of the camera.
If you do it on this side, then we can't take, so, sorry, the only one spot we can.
Get some musical chairs depending on who's, who's presenting.
She ever presented.
Just so everybody knows, you have to, you actually have to refer to the drawings by sitting because otherwise you're blocking the view of the camera.
If you do it on this side, then we can't take, so, sorry, the only one spot we can.
Get some musical chairs depending on who's, who's presenting. All right, so this is a, an application for a flexible subdivision of one lot into two. And. The basic consideration for the planning board is whether the, whether there are benefits to the town in, in granting the special permit that would allow the flexible subdivision that justify overriding the underlying zoning bylaw dimension requirements. So who's making the presentation and what's being proposed?
I'll introduce, we're talking about the density plan. And then Eric, we're talking about the flexible, very, very quickly, Susan Moore, the site manager, obviously, his neighbors. I represent Eric Robb Probitano, project ninety-eight Love Lane. They've lived there eleven years, they brought this from their analog back. And we tell you, it's Eric Veronica, who's the architect, we brought him as kind of a consultant on where, where houses may go and just help project survey. John Hamill, he's usually not here for these, but engineer, fear gaming, he's way on vacation this week. For the, for Eric, 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 the engineer, they're making things. And the septic, uh, part plan on this pool, on the density was done by Bill Russell. So just background, it's a three-point-five acre lot, simply managed with A. The house on the lot right there was built in nineteen oh four. On Love Lane, Love Lane is a private road. Quite narrow road, the driveway is thirty feet, I don't know how, how wide the pavement is, I don't plan, so variable. I bet it's much more than sixteen, seventeen feet someplace. It's characterized by fairly large houses. Hand, the list of the tax accessory, but, uh, there's a lot of houses over six thousand, some over eight and nine, that's great. There's four new houses, uh, there's some middle-aged houses on it, that would be from about nineteen thirty-five to nineteen fifty-one there. And there's four that were around the nineteen hundreds, so that, that characterized this, uh, Love Lane. Also, it's for a two-block flexible subdivision, in order to get there, and the traction on the flexible here is that a conventional, uh, uh, subdivision of this lot. Show you on the density, we can do a conventional, using the two-hundred-and-fifty feet of frontage. I know a usual density plan only requires you to show you can get two-hundred feet of frontage, the frontage requirement until nineteen ninety-eight. But this will show you exactly that it complied with the current zoning bylaw.
But you still need a waiver.
We need one waiver. We need a waiver for dead end, which is about every street in town for the last thirty-five years.
But not all of them.
How many have we turned down, because I've counted about thirty.
There were one in particular.
That's the only one I'm aware of, that's the only one I'm aware of. So we have to show a density plan first, and I'll just come up here long enough to, um, show you the next plan. And then I'll sit down.
Just so people, just so people understand, this is not, you're not actually proposing to do this. Just so people, just so people understand, this is not, you're not actually proposing to do this.
That's perfect. We, we would rather not do it.
You would rather not do it. And you, and you wouldn't do it if we didn't grant the waiver for the dead end road?
No promises on that.
Yeah, okay.
He doesn't wanna do it, he's put a lot of heart and soul into the house, the house is right here.
Yeah.
The nineteen oh four house, it is a beautiful house, instead of plantings, uh, but, uh, yeah. So, this is not something we plan to do, but we have to show that we could do. We're just to, uh, show that without substantial waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations and from its zoning by law, and we have to comply with zoning by law, that we could put a conventional subdivision in there, and that's what this is.
How many, how many homes?
Two. Two. Very brief description of the lot, as I said, it's three point five acres, it's a, it's a very gentle slope, uh, from front to back. There is wetland, not on the property, but there is the hundred foot buffer right there. You know, for those of you that did sidewalk, uh, you saw that, that this is, this area is pretty much open. There's, Provozano's planted a lot of trees along here, and substantial trees here, some here, a lot of them in front of the house that are planted, but that, it's seven, it's either seven or eight years ago. Rob, uh, took down a lot of the trees here, mostly ash and pine, and it's totally open. One thing, I didn't realize till I spoke with him tonight, that before he did that, he did that, so we have a record of when he came before the board. He came before the board when he was widening, he had to widen the driveway, uh, to this property. And, um, since it's on a scenic road, and then he had to widen the stone wall, look, he came before you. At the same time, he was planning to take down the trees, and he asked the board, uh, if, if there were any restraints on taking down trees. And he told, no, it was not, at that time, that was pre, uh, stormwater, water run.
Is that pre Bieber Road or no?
I don't know, it was two thousand eleven or two thousand ten, I don't know, I forgot. It seems like Bieber Road's a while ago, but it's probably not as long ago as I, I had a little. So, so that's, that's a characterization of the site. Luckily, for, for him, as far as saving the house, the house is on the northerly side of the lot, which frees up the southerly side of the lot. Uh, but the, uh, so, the conventional plan has a cul-de-sac. Both lots derive their frontage, uh, from the cul-de-sac, each lot has more than two hundred and fifty feet of frontage. One lot has sixty two thousand square feet, the back lot has sixty seven thousand. Obviously, we lose a lot of the three point five acres, because this can't be counted on either one. Cul-de-sac would obviously require, uh, removal of the house. Now, we have three other plans, but I don't, it's up to the board, if they wants to see, wants to see them, we have one with.
Just one other.
Yeah.
Clarification. That, doing that would also require taking down quite a bit of that stone wall in, in the street right away, right?
Uh, we would have to do a, a larger cut than the driveway, yeah.
And that requires a permit.
Requires a permit from the board, yeah. Yeah, because it's a scenic road. The road is, the right way is so narrow, the wall hasn't been there right away.
Yeah.
So, each, each, each lot, we're going to form, uh, the current zoning by law now. If the board would like, um, I'm not the engineer, but behind this, uh, maybe we'll show you. Second one, we, we put contours, uh, and the, the, the next one shows, shows, shows drainage, uh, in the road. Drain, the main drainage, uh, Mr. Gammie of Columbia signed for the drainage right there. And then, and if the board wants, the fourth plan is where Bill Murphy located the septic systems, uh, for these two lots, and shows where the soil test, uh, was done, uh, for the two lots.
Is that also on the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There. There's Mr. Gammie's details on the road layout, uh, you know, there's the detention basin. You know.
Right. Where the leach, where?
Leach field's over the septic.
Yeah.
That'll be the, the last plan, this Bill Murphy has, uh, the, uh, pulled down. That's where the test holes for one were, and there's the other leach field, right, you know, right there. That's by Bill Murphy. And, that. That's the density plan, I can answer your questions. Yes, it requires one waiver, and then, and then the issue would be whether that's a significant waiver. And submit that, you have a stone wall removal permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Is there a reason you didn't put the cul-de-sac to turn around on the other side, leaving the existing house to get in the back lot? And it's still heavy.
I had the same question.
John Hamill could probably answer that for us.
We tried to do that, and the geometry did not yield two lots under the zone A requirements.
So, it's.
How close was it?
You end up wasting.
Yeah. It was very close, very close, but I think it was the quadrangle, we couldn't get that ninety percent quadrangle.
And John is quite a puzzle expert, and then, lot after lot.
Even, I think, because we're just basically looking at it, you know, the same question, you can just ask that same question. Even if you did get it, you would probably, the, the, the existing house wouldn't meet the setbacks.
But it's already there.
Right, after the new lots, if that's, if that's the thought, like if you.
For a convention.
For a convention, if you slid it, if you slid the lollipop down, that, that new lot line would go through the middle of the existing house.
That would be our ideal, if, if we get turned down on the density plan, to try to put conventional, find a way to do it over there. Maybe we could get a variance to do it. It's hard to get a variance in that situation.
Just looking at all the different potential possibilities.
That's a good question.
It would be really interesting to see why it didn't work. Why, why isn't it? Well, because, you know, I'm, I'm hearing some people telling me things, you know, you can't get the rigularity, uh, to work, or, or you, the problem, the lot line would go right through the middle of the house, and, and so I like to see some, some of the others to do that. We might have. Yeah.
We don't want some of that.
Yeah, what does it say?
Yeah, exactly. It, it. Well, what we're hearing is they could do it with, with conventional.
John, can you? John's been watching through it, that was the, that was the first attempt.
The students have to have. Yeah, the idea is, is that you can save the house.
You prefer that over a lollipop to the.
Prefer just a second drag.
Exactly.
John, can you explain why you have to?
Well, you've got the quadrangle.
Can he walk up now?
Sure, that, that was a while ago, but we did, it was several months ago that we tried to put it on that side. And when we ran through every element beneath the rules, it failed on, on one or two. Let's see, on the quadrangle, at the fifty four thousand, yeah.
And they had that cul-de-sac farther away from the existing driveway and house than the, the home store is.
It was okay on the distance to Claret Drive.
So, the offset wasn't a waiver?
Did the trees come down or what? How long is that?
Fifty foot right away.
Fifty foot what?
Fifty foot right away.
Oh, okay.
The coefficient just made.
Yeah. I mean, it's an academic exercise, but it's, it's worth finding out.
These red lines show the quadrant line.
Turns out the existing house is right in the middle of one of the lots, so.
Yeah, but that's why the flexible subdivision.
Would be super easy.
Yeah, John, I'll get back to you.
I, I don't think that, we, we've never had a ability to give the permit for the stone wall, so. But, okay, so that's the, the density determination plan. Now, we're, now, the next phase of this is to take a look at the flexible subdivision.
Uh, Eric Veronica, architect, uh, working with, uh, Provozano on this project. During our sidewalk, you can see what the intention here in the flexible is, is to maintain the existing house driveway in the nature of that half of the lot. Provide a secondary lot, um, in the old meadow space with the driveway curb cut, uh, in this section here. Uh, in the sidewalk, we heard a lot of discussion around how this site will not compete or overbear the existing house. The intention of Provozano is to maintain that existing house. And there's lots of discussions on their part to, to maintain, to maintain. So, we, we took a look at, uh, putting a footprint on it to just sort of help the dialogue go, to maybe establish a tighter building envelope and second system location at this stage. Obviously, we'd be back at the next stage for the, the actual design of the house. These are the setback lines, forty five for the setback here, uh, the street setback, I think sixty five. Uh, and we have the twenty foot setback, the interior lot, one, two, two. Um, this house that we proposed here, in the discussion, was to, uh,
Can you hear me?
Bring this back further, uh, to, in fact, not, this was currently not a part of the street line.
You turn a little bit, we're very.
Sorry, I should sit down.
There you go.
Yeah, so, in this design, this house, we felt was, was far too forward to, um, overpower the existing house. Want to maintain, it seems there's a historic nature, particularly these two facets of the existing main house. This is in addition, uh, to the property that's been built upon at least three or four times over its, uh, existence. So, pulling this back and maintaining a view corridor through here, uh, to, to cite those two sides of the existing house. So, possibly shifting this all back, shift the main house back, and pull this, uh, back in line with the house so that it has a scale amassing and location on the site that feels, uh, that it's giving way to.
So, there's nothing preventing you from moving it back?
There's nothing, so the building envelope, as you can see, is here, there's two proposed septic areas, um, and we can certainly bring that back. We talked about not doing, you know, this interior driveway, maybe just doing a pull off, and some step, some step. One thing, and this is more for the neighbors, the board knows this, that there's absolutely no intention to build that house footprint, propose that footprint. It would just put something down there, uh, for discussion purposes, in fact, Rob already said it, I don't want the garage in the front of that house, I want the garage in the back of the house. So, you know, so, so there's absolutely no proposal on that footprint. It's just there for discussion.
Wes, Wes Lee Lin also had a good suggestion, it can go up the house. You know, as you come up Love Lane, maybe that house is angled this way. I, I'd love to view the house coming down, my house coming down, of our house coming down that way. Maybe this house is angled so that it takes the edge off of it, and I thought that was a, you know, there was some good suggestions, that, that, that. One, not overpower, you know, two, be angled, which that house is a place it would be important.
Sorry, so, I'm sorry, but, but the proposal is, the, the benefit to the town is that the house, the existing house gets saved. Cause it gets saved in its entirety. What is, what are the, what, what are the issues we have to think about? Is the historical importance of the existing house? Is it the entire house? A portion of the entire house? Or there, is there flexibility to modify parts of the, of the existing house? And how much flexibility and over what sections?
That's the, that's the part of what we're, we were talking about, maybe getting involved with historic, uh, to, to generate some dialogue. And what, I feel that the main structure of the house is the historic piece of most of this over here is.
Essentially, the main block.
The main block.
With the, with the chimneys and that, and the, the. Two chimneys, two. And, and the, the, um, the, the wing heading that way towards Route twenty is, is, is less sacrosanct. And certainly, everything in the back is less sacrosanct. So, what are we preserving? When you said, you said, you said the house, but the, but what is it? And, and we were, when we were on the sidewalk, we said that we're the planning board, but we're not, we're not assessors of historical importance. So, we, we need guidance from the historical commission as to what latitude of change the person who, who eventually lived in, in the existing house might have to modify it. Because, or is the, is the idea to leave it exactly as it is, no changes forever? How much latitude for change would there be for that house? So, what exactly is it that we're preserving? We, we, I think we need more information on that.
Well, I think we certainly have to talk to someone from historical.
And I invited, as we mentioned on the sidewalk, I actually invited the chairman of the historical commission, the two chairman, to come to the, to the meeting, so that we could bring them into the discussion.
I, I envision, you know, something like, like, well, two thoughts. One, once you get a house here, it becomes much less likely, with this house in the old shape, anyone's gonna take it down, because now it's a substantially smaller lot. But it's no guarantee, but I have envisioned a special permit that would then put through a historical commission, lists certain things that, that have to be preserved. But frankly, once it's, the house is part of the special permit, any change to that house would have to come back to the planning board.
Or come back somewhere, I'm not sure the planning board would wanna get involved in every change and addition in that house, or modification in that house. You, for example, let's just, I, I don't know whether this is the case or not, but if in the main block of the house, the, the windows are original, but somebody fifteen years from now wanted to change the windows to something else, you know, fiber X. I don't think the planning board would wanna get involved in that kind of a discussion, you know, but I think it's the kind of thing that historical commission routinely gets involved with. So, who administers, or the changes, and at what level? So, I think we need some clarification on that.
You know, we're certainly, you know, happy to work with you folks, but frankly, the, the, the main kind of line we're trying to draw, we'd rather not have a preservation restriction on record, but we'd like, willing to have restrictions renewed, incorporated into a special permit. We can talk about, you know, I can envision a special permit, if, if someone wants to change anything on that list, they have to go to historical commission to discuss, you know, get your seal approved, or something like that. So, that does bring them into the picture, but we'd rather avoid a, a preservation restriction, so this, this would be convenient.
Trying to see the difference.
As a conveyance or.
Like you're just trying to dodge the, the title.
I have tried to dodge the title and the pages as a conveyance or more pages that are there on, on some type of permit.
on some type of permitting restriction, the more, the more difficult it is to sell and.
Seeing as it's very simple, then preservation restriction. So, that's basically.
There are different levels of preservation, isn't it? No. I, I have, well, we actually had that question come up recently on another, on another building, and we were not successful in any of the things that would have teeth. But, you know, we still could look and, you know, maybe there's something that you can help us find.
That's a good thing with a special permit, it gives you the flexibility, virtually do it, to mark the list. And the chief would be, and go to the historical first before they come, you can deny the special permit.
But we can miss that out.
Yeah, we could rely on.
No, it's not. Put a special permit.
This is a special permit animal, this isn't a site owner.
Right, no. Well, it's, it's, you know, I guess, you know, you've done other, done some other ones where the house involved and saved is not a three forty-six or a special house. But even there, if you change anything, you'd have to go back, you know, on the house because it's part of, part of the two, flexible.
One of the things, I mean, if you look at the, at the two footprints there.
Yeah.
It's not only the position of the new house in relation to the existing one, just look at the difference in scale between the two footprints.
Yeah.
And that, that's one of the things that we're concerned about. It's sort of maintaining the focus on the existing house. The relative size of the new one is going to be important.
They were thinking.
I agree.
They were thinking, you know, this, this one, this isn't our PFA. This one's, I'll give you a chart, ninety-eight is listed here.
Existing house is seven, right?
Yeah, sixty-three, forty-six, and one gross living area. Here's, here's the street. But I agree, you do not want this whole, coming, this whole overpowering.
I don't think we're going to compare this new house with all the other houses.
Yeah, yeah. Now, and one of the things, one of the things.
They live at the size.
Right, they live at the size. One of the things that's always.
But I guess, I guess one thing is by having a big, we've seen this, I know, twice. And I don't want to get used to seeing it that big, and I don't want anybody else to get used to seeing it that big.
The next time you see it, you'll see it much smaller. But one thing to remember is this house, I assume this is taller than the, than the Bible allows for. It's three full stories, master bedroom, third floor. So, this is always going to be a presidient structure, its front facade, even though it's skinny. But, yeah, I think Provenzanos are in agreement that they do not want this house to overpower this one.
How big were you thinking of the secondary house?
We're going to need some consultation on that because, to throw you a figure, he thought, he thought, he thought six thousand. Remember, this one's got this too.
Is that barn considered significantly, significant historical? I don't know how old the barn is.
Oh, that would be part of what got saved.
Yes, I didn't know it was a whole part. I don't know it's.
That would be saved.
There are horse dogs.
Okay, perfect, lovely.
It's in good shape.
A lot of, a lot of work.
Your starting point is six thousand.
Yeah, it would take it around there.
It's also important to show the house to the left of the proposed house because we need the context of where that is relative to the lot in the street in order to know how far back we can reasonably push the new house.
Also.
That'll give you some help right there.
Can I just add, I mean, we're already, we're sort of going on the assumption that by right that you presented to us is valid. And, I mean, we have, since I'm no good at that, because I've been looked at to make sure that it is indeed valid.
Requires a waiver and affirmative.
Right, right. But.
Does that make the trade call out?
Yes. But if it would avoid, I'm saying, yes, it needs a waiver and a permit, but if it's by right, they can do it.
Not if it needs a waiver and affirmative, it's not by right.
All right, okay, good, so.
Yeah, I mean, we have to, we have to issue a permit, a scenic roads permit on the stone wall. And we can say no to that.
Well, remember, worst-case scenario, we don't want that. There's already two cuts, they can do a shared driveway out the other period.
But that wouldn't be a subdivision or a subdivision.
We would rather avoid that.
I mean, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a conforming subdivision.
Oh, so, so we're, we're just talking about, I would think you would see that if you did the road entry here for the, for the conventional, you've got two, two curb cuts now. Recreate, you would put wall back on the second one.
You could still say no.
You could, but that, that might be viewed as a producer discretion.
That might be, we could watch it right down the field.
Yeah.
But, I, I, nobody wants to do that. I think everybody, everybody is, is in agreement conceptually that it would be great if we could achieve the goals in general that we're, that we're looking at, and it's preserving the important parts of the existing house in exchange for the construction of a new house that respects the scale and the, and the character of the existing house and doesn't steal the thunder from it. That's, those are the basic provisions. The, the question is, how do we get from here to the final, the finish?
Thank you, Mary Allo, company of the base. And I think we're all in agreement on those bases.
Yeah, but we just need to figure out how to get there.
Have to get there.
Yeah. And I think step one would be, for us, would be finding out what's important about the existing house to save and where the flexibilities are for making modifications. And by the way, I assume we're only talking about exterior importance. So, I assume that it's, anything on the interior is fair game?
Yeah, Tony should have.
What did you say?
No, he's thinking of it.
I'm looking for trouble.
And save that.
He said that's up to him.
No, really, I, I mean, is, is it, we need to figure that out.
Also, I think it's important to know that when we say we prescribe the size of it, we're talking about the area. But we can also prescribe the height, the height of the eave, the style of the house, you know, to keep it lower than the existing house. So, there's a lot of things that we can control.
Keep it secondary.
And we have another flexible.
I watched Eric in action on Wetch Street, did a nice job of that.
Houses, so at this stage, first, and then coming back to the house, you were trying, the intention here was to get some dialogue on how to set a parameter on the lot, which then would obviously have to come back again.
I think you should ask Imei for some examples of other flexible developments where we're having all sorts of controls on the new construction, the size, the height, the style, the height of the, you know, the eave and where the, where the roof starts.
Church Street.
Yeah, that's one, but there are. Right, exactly. There are definitely some good examples.
I have one question that the, your input would be helpful. I think everyone agrees this has to go farther back. Rob would like to, not looking for a lot, but within that envelope, whatever envelope we have, leave enough room if someone, somebody wants to put a swimming pool there. It'd be a lot easier if this is, if you push things back and that's part of the envelope for a possible swimming pool. If he could put the leach field here, here, he could probably move it up a little. He's already pretty aggressively got trees here. He'd like to keep this open, this, this alley right to the street. So, your input on that would be helpful tonight. The concept, I know as a general, we don't like leach fields in front of the property, but this might be a little different.
Well, Love Lane is, you know, it's, in my, at least in forty-seven years of driving on Love Lane, it's sort of characterized as, in my mind, it's mostly sort of a street with a canopy overhead and tree-lined for the most part. And it would be, I wouldn't want to preclude that possibility. You know, I'm not talking about giant gnarly spruces. You know, I'm talking about shade trees that you can see through so that you can still get a view of the existing house from the street, but something that would, that would give some, that would give some context and scale to the both houses, at least as a possibility.
Yeah, and, and looking to. And I don't know, I don't know, maybe they can move it a little bit, making sure there's enough rows.
Look, I mean, we don't have to, we don't have to tail wag the dog. I mean, that center dog with the test, it's, the soils aren't changing. If it, you know, so, if the house is sliding back and the lollipop up to the front doesn't happen, this leaching field doesn't, for the flexibles, won't happen.
Doesn't have to go along the stone wall.
Doesn't have to go along the stone wall, that can get slid out.
Rob says they got great soil tests.
Yeah, so, right now, you're, you're anchoring that septic field to those soil tests. It can, it can go back as far, you know, it's still being in the front, free up the back, but still provide room if you want to do like, you know, whatever, nice trees in the front. Not like, you know, I get what you're saying, so, I, I think.
To maintain the canopy of the street.
Yeah.
So, push that back to get out.
I mean, you know, just to leave that possibility open. Don't lock us out of it.
There might be another way of also looking at this, which is right now, if everything moves back and if that driveway no longer hugs the leaching field farther up, the more intense green is actually between the leaching field and the driveway. The second half is green, you're going to do focus on this one house.
Could be, sure.
Something like that's possible.
Sure, I mean, I, I think that's, absolutely.
And I would focus on, not placing elements, because at the end of the day, we're not going to have a plan that shows the elements, right? But, but memorializing results. So, if, if the desire is to have shade trees and a twenty-foot buffer along the stone wall and that the grades in the first sixty feet of the stone wall are essentially the same as they are today, that would be memorialized. You got the leaching field under that or don't have it under that, we don't care. We just don't want to see a mound, and we don't want to include other stuff we have.
But the flexible subdivision can include specific landscaping.
Yeah.
And I think you would want to do that as part of the flexible rather than waiting until the house is.
Yeah, I mean, we typically do it in two phases because the, what, the first phase is released to the special permit. And so, we typically push sort of generic planning in the initial, in the flexible permit plan.
Or death of holes that want to be filled. Right, right, so like stuff we know isn't, isn't going to change. So, just to give like the trees a head start, if there's a hole that needs to be.
Exactly. And then come back for the second phase, the site plan review, once, once the basics are nailed down. So, yeah.
So, you actually think you'll have something more substantial or more holistic about twenty-five?
This is going to hinge a lot on the historical information.
Okay, so we've got a little.
And I, because they don't have anything better to do.
Phyllis says it has nothing else to do.
So, maybe we could, could we kick back and forth and see what kind of schedule they thought they might be able to.
I'll give you Provenzano's phone number, you can get onto the property.
Okay, okay, we'll probably want to have a site visit at some point soon.
All right, so, Jonathan, maybe, I'm trying to think. I know that you were hoping for a continuation to the, to the twenty-fifth, right? I'm not sure what will happen between now and the twenty-fifth. Maybe what we do is, is say, let's schedule it for the twenty-fifth.
See what happens.
See what happens. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
All right. We'll do that, then, we'll continue for the twenty-fifth. Do some coordination work and.
Right, and then as far as the, John, just the density plan that shows the lollipop on the left-hand side.
Yes.
Just maybe an email from Peter about, and I think I know why, it's shown over there and out on the right. And my guess is two of the factors are exactly the number. And then to develop the density plan, the grading and that stuff would just be a little harder because the grades are steeper. So, it's, it's viable, but it's, it would have been more work than having it on the right. More, more physical work.
But is John saying it's not viable on the left?
Okay, let me just share a little bit more information. Initially, when we started this exercise, we tried to lay it out on the left-hand side. And we took the existing deeds and existing record data. And for face value, for the record plan that's at the registry of deeds.
Right.
It worked on the left-hand side. So, we were aiming to put it on the left-hand side. Then, once we got past that hurdle, we then segwayed into going out to do the underground survey. When we did the underground survey, the, it was so tight. And when we, when we physically measured it, the land boundaries, as they measured out, tweaked in such a way that it was no longer viable to put it on the left side. And then we said, we don't think we can do this.
Two of those factors.
And then we played around with it and got it on the right side.
I don't know, I, I'm sort of okay with that.
All right, I just.
Tracing that.
Yeah, all right, that's fine, I just.
Yeah, I, I agree, it was one of the first.
I mean, it was, two of those numbers were just right on. So, when you did the field survey, they were off, they made.
We were being cautious, that's fine.
Yeah, and you just want to know if it's, we have to shoot the hostages apart.
That's it.
Yeah, well, that's it.
Are there, are there neighbors here that would like to? Yes.
Um, my name is Missinella. I live at twenty-four Buckskin, which is literally right behind this property, right behind ninety-eight. And when the land, up until the land was cleared, I had a perfect screening. And I'm sure I was unable to go on a site visit yesterday because I was out of town. But I'm sure as you look today, you can't see anything through the trees right now because all the leaves are up. But, but since the property has been cleared, you see a lot more through the trees. I can see his house, I can see the cars, from my bedroom window, it came from all the back of the house. Now, I think there's like a forty-foot draw from Love Lane to Buckskin Drive. So, I can see the cars coming down Love Lane at night. And I can see, I can see things that I never saw before in a lot of places. So, I'm concerned that, number one, a lot of trees have already been taken down. And I don't want to see any more trees taken down.
Right, that's not going to happen. Well, I think, I think they've all been taken down.
Well, and I'm not even sure where this land ends and where the conservation land begins. So, I'm not sure what's part of this property now, it's hard to tell because of the draw. But I would also, would like to see some larger trees put back there in the public service so that when all the leaves come down again, I'm not looking at the back of this house at all. And, you know, unfortunately, the back of this house and the back of my house, even all the bedrooms in the back and all, like, so you see everything at night through the leaves.
Right.
So, that's my one concern. And my second concern is drainage issues. I know the house to the left of me, if I'm on Love Lane, and all the way up, Buckskin, maybe not, but a few houses up had wetlands issues and had big swampy issues. And I know when they were doing some construction on Love Lane, that there were some issues that we had to address in order to deal with the runoff, especially because it's coming from behind and it's going down. So.
Right.
And now we're talking about moving a house even further back.
We would, that's part of our, well, perhaps you were here for some of our previous series.
I was, I was.
You can see, we really get into that issue pretty deeply, or as much as we can, you know, based on what we're able to determine. That's something we would definitely address before anything got actually built there.
Okay, so those are, those are my two concerns. Well, tree actually, no more taking down trees, planting some trees back where they're positioned at. And, I mean, you can't see now the top of it for the fall, but it is very skinny.
No, I believe.
Much steeper than the fall and the, and then.
And then runoff issues. Right, thank you. You're with her? Okay, yes.
I, I just have one question before I begin my leach field that I wrote up. Is a flexible, is, is the conventional subdivision by right? Um, is a flexible, is, is the conventional subdivision by right, if you prove that you can do it by, by right in the conventional way, is not the flexible also by right?
No, no, it requires a special permit, it's a special permit process.
You said that, 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 that deny?
Yes.
And, and say basically, you have to do the flexible?
Yeah, uh, you... And you say you have to do the flexible?
Yeah, right, I mean, well, I mean, if you have the right by the conventional to do two lots.
Conventional's not...
And you deny the flexible, then they, then, and they want two lots, then they have to do the conventional, okay? Why not?
Because of waivers.
But the waiver, and you have to...
There's a waiver that you've made, that you've made...
And maybe we wind up in Land Court, and maybe we don't. Nobody wants to do that.
I know.
Trying not to do that is kind of a question.
I understand, where I'm coming from is, is that I, I don't understand that this idea that, um, the idea that the town has the, you have to show the benefit to the town to do a flexible. And I mean, there should be obvious benefit without, even without, um, saving the house. There is very, very obvious benefit in doing flexible. I, I'm not sure why that...
So you're not advocating to save the house?
I am, I am not, actually. I, um, what I'm advocating for is, is that, uh, the house, I believe that, that if the, if the property is subdivided and the Provenzanos have continued to upgrade the house, and the property is smaller, the house will be saved without having to twist their arm, uh, that's...
Well, somebody's going to buy it.
Somebody's going to buy it, and you, and I believe that they will keep it without, uh, with... I know I don't know that, but I, but I don't understand the, the legal justification for requiring the preservation, you know, a full-blown preservation restriction, I think something is okay, but...
But it's a general...
I, I'm aware of that, I'm protesting.
One thing you're saying...
And I mean, you're, you're talking to someone who obviously cares very deeply about this house. But I also feel that there's a process, uh, uh, here that's, that's kind of not fair.
Well...
Okay. Al, one thing you're saying, maybe you'll disagree, but over time, and so I went back to a Pam survey many years. You did the flexible, the second question you're asking now, you've done this last few years, is what's in it for the town? That question didn't used to be asked. It used to be very easy to slide, you showed you could do the conventional, you could slide over the flexible. Yeah, you negotiate on the driveways and all that, but it wasn't, it, it used to be, it wasn't what's in it for the town. I'm not saying you can't do it that way, but I think that would explain some of the confusion that is changed, that's happened the last five years.
I happen to have been on the planning board.
I know you have.
When that, when the flexible subdivision dialogue...
You and I were both there when it came along, and it...
And I, I happen to remember the discussion.
And there was never what's in it for the town.
But even if it was, what's in it for the town is obvious that a flexible is always better.
Not necessarily.
That, that you're on a solid path.
Well, Pam, right now, I don't want to get into it at this point, honestly. We, we could, we could have that discussion until hell froze over. Uh, and I don't think it's worthwhile having that discussion right now.
Well, let me, can I argue my statement to the record in that talk that we've done?
Okay.
It won't take that long. In nineteen ninety-one, my family moved to West Oak, purchased ninety-eight Lot Lane. I love the many details that make the house very special. In two thousand and five, I sold the house to Rob and Mary Provenzano, who also recognized the wonderful qualities of this house. In the past year, they've made many improvements, and I've been very fortunate that the house has found new owners who loved it and cared for it, and cared for it as I did. There was always the possibility that the property could be subdivided if it met all the dimensional requirements of a conventional subdivision. A number of engineering steps were required to see if the property does meet these requirements. I chose not to follow up on this possibility when I sold the house to the Provenzanos. However, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of this subdivision if the property does meet these requirements. The house sits on the right-hand corner of the property, leaving a great deal of land where a second house could be sub-sited, back from the street, and in my opinion, fitting comfortably. Flexible subdivision was written precisely to allow a sensitive subdivision of a property like this, allowing the existing house to be retained. I would much prefer this process be overstayed by the Provenzanos rather than by a belt who might purchase the property in the future and undertake changes without having lived there. The Provenzanos have shown their commitment to the house over the past thirteen years with their many improvements. If the property is not subdivided, I believe it's only a matter of time before the house is demolished and replaced by a large new house that sits in the center rather than a corner of the lot. While there is no guarantee that the subdivision of the house will save, subdivision of the lot will save the house, I believe that the proposed subdivision offers the best chance that the historic house at ninety-eight Lot Lane will be preserved into the future.
That's, I think that was more or less what my, my synopsis was about, about fifteen minutes.
I know, it wasn't, it wasn't that original.
There's agreement, that's what's going on, there is agreement.
If I can...
But there's a subtle difference.
Okay, okay, I, I want to say that I'm going to fight hard for some sort of restriction on that, whether it's a historic preservation restriction or something like we talked about before, I think that's important. I'm, I have reasons to be nervous about not doing it. Yeah, I have reasons to be nervous about not doing it.
Let's leave it at that. Love it. All right.
So you're going to talk with the store?
Yeah.
That's where we started here is, uh, dialogue to you?
Yeah, so you're going to be in touch with Jonathan and work out a schedule, and we'll, we'll, we'll reconvene perhaps on the twenty-fifth.
Sounds like the other thing is, is you'd like us to come in with showing maybe preliminary plan that you can work with.
That would be, that would be helpful, and maybe more to find info of the bill.
Yep, yeah, we'll, we'll be there.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll see you guys. Did I feel better? Yeah. Now, I have the purpose.
I hope you did, yeah.
All right, I got you. I feel, I, I...
Okay. So we are next looking at an amendment to the site plan review decision of forty-nine Lawrence. There is a proposal to remove and replace a tree and change paving and extend and retain the wall. At, at the building, and I'm not sure whether this was in our, in the packets that we got, or was it presentation? EMO or not?
I think it was mentioned.
You got it?
I got it from what you...
Thanks. Okay. So EMO, we have a memorandum here from EMO that discusses this, and I'll just read it. Uh, they're asking to extend a wall in the rear, uh, change the pavement and lighting configuration at the rear, change paving material at the driveway, and remove an additional tree, oh, here we go, uh, for the stone wall along the right side that was approved. The current plans don't show a replacement treaty, however, they've agreed to a replacement if updated plans are presented at the meeting.
Yes.
Are they going to be presented at the meeting?
Yes.
All right, so, so I assume, Jay, you're, you're going to be making a presentation on that?
Yes. Angela can't be at a match, she's actually the landscape architect of the project. Um, so you kind of just follow up kind of the exact order that you mentioned. So the idea is, this wall originally was approved by the planning board, then went up to about this section here. They want to extend, and now this is all a conforming wall, so it's, it doesn't need CBA. We would like to extend that and make that as the backdrop for this section, because they want to, this is going to fire pit there. And so this is all going to be a lower section wall, they have a plenty of all on top. So you can't really see this wall, you can't see that wall anyway from the backside. Um, so that wall's all going to be less than, uh, three feet tall. The, um, they did rework generally the patio work inside here and the lawns, but it's all basically the same. So the, there used to be, um, this used to be patio, there used to be a patio section here, and there used to be a garden area here. So what they did is they took this patio section, put it there, and made this all on, took this, this patio section out and made that on. So they, they kind of just reworked where they were going to place the pavers and stuff like that. Um, they added some, uh, I think it's a, I think a little rock course that goes around here. It's a timber rock, I think it's called, and then these, this is just stone sections. The, the part that you guys would like is that we originally had all our pool equipment back here, and they're actually on the inside now. Going here, they've already been installed.
Are you saying that all these changes have been made already, and they're...
No, they're not in accordance with the... No, these haven't, no. No, these are all, um, these are all, some of, some of this work is being installed, like, this, this wall's been installed partially. This already has been changed, where they, they took the, the pool equipment, placed it over here instead, which is an improvement to the design.
Some changes have been made.
Yeah, these, the design is basically, I'm talking about how they're changing this out, swap that out, like that kind of stuff. So it's, so some of the changes have been in the midst of being made, but that we still need approval for.
There's a zoning setback off the property line.
So this is, this is, there's only setback here, and so this one, the wall and the setback just has to be less than three feet tall.
Where's your next house?
This is all, uh, this is Tom Lane, the backside. So the house is next door, there's a house next door over here, um, over here, which they actually have a small court there, their, their whole type backyard's all lawn. So the house is ready, and then this one is, is a rep, maybe two of the two parcels, and so there's a, there's a BBW that runs right through here, and so that, that section's like...
So you're about to say, it's like that? It sounds like gorgeous, like, uh...
So there's, there's that.
It's like that, but that way.
There's a drainage channel that kind of goes through there, so the other house is way over there. And so the neighbors, the one that, we originally, I can, I sound like you here, was to get the approval for this, this, um, wall extension. So this was a replacement of a fence with the wall, and then we mentioned with the CBA. We realized that there was a tree that wasn't looking at there in the survey, and so that's this one tree. And so what they'd like to do is take that one tree down and then replace it with a six-inch, uh, agro dollwood, is that correct?
Yes. Okay, and you're okay with that?
There are those two things in the back there, those are like, um, chimneys or barbecue things, just a fire pit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so everything below.
And then, and then the, the other thing they would like to do is, if you remember from the original design, they actually had a little banding inside the actual asphalt area, so this was all going to be like a paper section. And so, um, they would like not to do that portion of the project in. So what I did is I actually went around the project site, and you can kind of see where the numbers are, so I, you know, looking up from the street, looking from the actual driveway out, driveway out, and kind of going through, so looking up through that area. So these are all, this sowing that's been planted since, so that Jonathan can get, it was all, it was up and running since then. There's another look at them through there. This is actually looking at from number four, so the area where we were just talking about. So that's, that's the portion of the wall that's been constructed right there, with all the concrete on top. Now, as we kind of come through this section here, this is the wall, portion of the wall that's kind of been constructed, all those plantings have been installed, so they have, they have pools. And so now we're looking down from this area here, so you can see there's just the top of the cool house. Coming through here, you see a portion of the garage, and then as we get off the property, we're looking back, and you can still see all the plantings. So you actually never get a chance to see the actual driveway. So when we were doing that, we were like, the main reason why we're doing that paper and, you know, cutting was to kind of break up the asphalt. But now when we're looking at all the plantings that have been installed, you don't ever see the, the driveway, and so that cost...
So those plantings were near at all, right?
And it's been...
They were, they were great when they were put in, I mean, I know they were really extensive group.
They've done some more since.
Well, I can see, just even my terrible eyesight, can see that, uh, they're looking good, so everybody's intact, but everything's alive and well up there.
So there's no increase in the per view service?
No. It's all basically just re...
And there are no additional lights because of the, um, sitting area in the back and all the rest of it would be...
Same idea, it's, it's the, it's the reallocation of the lighting, so the luminous won't change, it's just where they are in the backyard, not changing.
And of course they're...
Right, same, same, same mind, just what we're looking at. Because, you know, what they did is originally, you know, the thought was, you know, this wasn't really thought to be the main area of where everybody's going to be. So now that's where everybody's, I mean, it's become more socialized back there.
Yeah. So this is the proposed plan, do you have the existing plan that was approved in that line approval?
Yeah, it's not, it's smaller on this one. Yeah.
Yeah, that's really like, I can't... But you don't have a comparable one?
And you went up.
Careful.
Yeah, so if you can...
He did a story. You jump four feet.
Yeah.
So this is what I mentioned, so if you're looking at.
Yeah.
This is the section here, which is the section of...
Like, oriented, same...
Oh, yeah, yeah. So what we have here is, this is the, the original patio that we improved. And so what they've done is they've gotten rid of this section here, that's lawn, they got rid of this section here, that's lawn, and they filled in this section. So now you have this whole section here, so that's, they just took this out, that out, filled this in. So this, this here, so we have, we have this gate right here.
It says steppers. Or a stepper, just baby steps?
Yeah.
Not steps?
Yeah, yeah, this is all one thing.
So the blue is just a different material?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Those are stone stairs, I got that back. Is there anything in this that we would object to? I, I don't see anything I would object to at all.
No.
So maybe we can have a motion to accept the changes?
I move.
Maybe we can have a second, maybe we can have a vote, all in favor?
I...
I oppose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. All good? Hi, Bob. You guys need to get some sleep.
Oh, we just got a little early, you guys, I don't know how you guys...
Oh, this is early, about, uh, two-thirds of the way through.
Nah. We'll be gone for a minute.
Hold trash.
I hope.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
If you go Church Street right away, you have a tree right just...
Well, yeah, the next item is Church Street, the, the EPW missed the tree on Church Street, front of one seventy-nine Church Street. We unanimously, um, denied the application to remove the tree. The EPW would like us to reconsider that vote.
Based on their memo.
Based on their memo. And, um, I think that that is something that we could probably postpone until...
Yay.
A later meeting.
I agree.
Yay, yes.
So you had...
Somebody from the audience want to speak?
Yeah, you had input from a single abut there that wanted to be involved.
Well, I did receive a telephone call from, from the person who lives at one seventy-nine. She and her neighbors who are away now would like to be able to come to the meeting when we discuss this.
So we'd like to continue this to September?
We'll just, we'll continue this to September. I will say tentatively to September the nineteenth.
Well, there's an issue.
Okay, and what's the issue?
Well, the issue is that, as I was looking at the calendar, that's, uh, not before.
So technically, it will be over with by seven thirty?
It will be, so, well, well...
But we can't have, we, I don't think we can actually hold a meeting on a religious holiday, we've, we've had to cross this bridge before.
You're not supposed to.
Um, so we may have to put that off until twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth. Um, but let's say the nineteenth for now, and then...
Right.
But let's say the 19th for now, and then EMI can fix it later, how's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
Is there any election to complete with that?
I'm looking, I mean, now Google Calendar fills in everything.
Okay.
We should know that Ashura is the next one.
Yes.
26th of September.
That's what we were hearing, we'll try for the 19th, if it doesn't work, we'll, we'll.
We'll do whatever other day.
Establish another day, yeah. Minutes?
I didn't read mine.
I didn't read mine.
I was supposed to do the eight, the four, one, eight, so I now will do them. June, whatever, where, what month is it?
All right, next meeting's the 25th.
I guess I will have it done.
Okay.
I'm gonna do April 20. I'm doing April 18th, and you're doing May.
Okay, so we'll do that at the next meeting. Here we go. Two, they're looking for two liaison representatives. Sue, you're, you are retiring for the CPC.
No, 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 I did try desperately to recruit, mostly, but she said.
I don't know enough yet.
So she said I don't know enough, and that was really genuine.
Okay.
And so I, I.
So you're gonna keep going?
I, I will, yeah. Reappoint.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're reappointing Sue as a volunteer for the CPC for yet another year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Sue, so that was that. Then the sustainability committee.
What is that?
That is about establishing sustainability policy for the, for the town.
Wow, that's pretty inclusive, I mean, like, wow.
Right, and they're gonna be, I think that, I think.
Trash, trees, houses.
You name it.
Noise, it's sustainability, right?
Water. Yeah.
Now, is this a new Board of Selectmen initiative?
This is a new Board of Selectmen initiative. There're gonna be seven members on the, on the committee. It's got this, a member, a representative from the Selectmen, planning board, school committee.
PBC.
And the PBC, and then three at-large members. So we have to.
I like CPC, so.
CBC. So we, we have to point a member, but it doesn't have to be somebody who's a member of the planning board.
It doesn't?
No.
Somebody.
We could, we could find a representative, we could find a representative to represent us. If, if, if no one on the, on the planning board feels that they wanna step up and follow up here to do it, I don't know. Does, does somebody wanna step up and be a member of this committee?
If I say yes, am I an idiot?
We all have to be on some committee.
I'm sorry.
No comment. We're all on extra committees.
This is not important to the planning board.
Right, right, so this is just sustainability, which means my background and lead and all that certification.
Oh. Exactly.
But I'm no longer the lead, I let that fall, so that's, I'm no longer lead certified.
Well, you're, you're lead of merits.
Yes, I am a merit.
This is.
Your legacy.
Is that what they call them nowadays on the rest of these?
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, is it something you'd be interested in?
It is something I'd be interested in.
Maybe you could think about it and just let me know?
Sure, let's do that.
Okay.
And if they have any description that you can pass on?
I do, and I'll, I'll forward it to you.
I mean, if there's somebody not on the planning board, it would be better and more.
The only other person to think of, who is heavily involved, not telling me, is David Metz, who worked with me today, and who certainly would be, is very environmentally concerned.
Well, that's a possible way to think of.
Yeah, so there's another backup.
Yeah.
Because he's, he was really.
Maybe you can sound him out and see how, how he feels about it.
I hope everyone's gonna be kind to us, though.
I think he's more than happy to be out of the, out of the line of fire.
I know, he might like, this is not really a line of fire, like, this is sort of forward-thinking, futuristic.
I like that.
Well, let's let him think about it.
Well, if you think about it, we need some backups.
That's a luxury.
David's definitely on the short list, but we'll, we'll make a list of possible backups. If Leslie, Leslie says.
I come to my senses.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, fair enough, all right.
See, what else do we have? One of the things. Planner report.
Is included, 11 Bradford is included.
11 Bradford, here's the deal. The deal is, I got a call from, from John Field asking for an interpretation. A zoning, a zoning biolong interpretation, which I have to say is, is a first. And the deal is, 11 Bradford was initially built, it, it, it was a, the, the RGFA was, was 5,300 square feet. But then subsequently, well, the market with a, with a square footage of 8,000, so we've never seen that before. What, what the builder was proposing to do, the owner was to do, is to construct a garage at the corner of Bradford and Kings Grant. And here's, here's. All right, so they wanna build, this is the house, the L-shaped thing. This is Bradford Road, this is Kings Grant. This is wooded, the area along Bradford is, is all wooded. So this is a screen between Bradford and Kings Grant. Wanna build a new garage, a three-car garage, which the contours run uphill from Kings Grant up to the house. So this, this thing is sort of dug into the hill.
Okay.
With a new driveway that comes, that comes off Kings Grant, and there's a forecourt. So there are a lot, there's a big topographical change here, this, this would all have to tie into the contours.
Yeah, I wonder what the mulch is in the back of our garage.
I don't, I forget. I, I saw a, a plan of it, but the idea is that the builder was saying, because you can't see this from the house, it doesn't.
It doesn't count?
In the RGFA calculation.
You mean that, so this is like the Ted Williams House, you come directly down into the.
Actually, it's straight here.
And there's no roof on this?
It's slanted, it's a slanted roof, but you'll be able to see it from Kings Grant, because all of these trees will be gone.
Yeah, unfortunately, because of the driveway, makes it difficult, because it does have a really big impact.
The question is whether we should, whether, the question John Field had was whether we should review this. And my answer was that if you look at the definition of RGFA, it includes attached and detached garages, period.
Underground, above ground.
Doesn't say anything about their location, it just says attached and detached garages. So my interpretation was, we have to look at it, because it's a, it's a detached garage.
And you said this was one of our 5,999.
This was a, this was under the RGFA.
Right. And then the bump out.
When was this house built?
Now this is clearly, this makes it clearly.
Yeah, this is definitely a.
This was built.
So when you reviewed it?
It's like 1990, the early 2000s, right?
So after 1998.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So if it went from 5,000 to 8,000, that didn't come for planning board?
No, because it was all interior. Part of, part of it's a walkout story about great, it doesn't matter.
And I, I, real tryst.
But then shit's come over, the RGFA goes over, because this is a three-car garage from the bump out, so. So.
You're right, well, it doesn't define, it doesn't say garages underground, not be included.
Based on the definition of RGFA, we should review it, period.
Yeah.
The builder has appealed it to the, to the CBA. So we'll see what happens with the CBA. So that's the story on Bradford.
Okay.
Other than that, what else do we have, anything?
Is there, I assume there's not a town final report, if you might.
Well, this was part of it.
Yeah.
You just got it.
Uh, yeah, this was, right.
On the back side.
Yeah, the, the reps and.
Yeah, the last page.
Well, and then, lastly, just before I left yesterday, a fellow came to the counter asking about a possible approval not required between himself and his neighbor to adjust the boundary lines. The proposal turned out to be not feasible, and created non-conformities. But he did go on to say, the planning board is having a great job of the town, and he is fortunate to be here.
I was reading that. No, but there's one more thing for you to do, Sue, and that is move to.
I move.
Second.
Second.
Hi.
Tell me, Anthony, if you have a question.